When I apply 2026 budget, Mr. Williams, if you recall the role, please.
Mr. Steven Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Al Miles.
Here.
Mr. Kenneth Pritchett.
Here.
Mr. Cory Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Louis Proctor.
Here.
Mr. Bernard Lundey.
Here.
Mr. Adrian Dan.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. At this time, we will move to number three.
Good afternoon. Thank you Board Chair President and School Board members. We will now have our presentation. This is now our FY26 proposed budget. This is going to be our FY official FY26, 2026 public hearing for our proposed FY26 budget. So with that, I will bring up Mr. John Wallingford, our Chief Financial Officer Consultant, also the former Chief Financial Officer who worked with Petersburg beginning, I think, in February of 2024. Is that correct, Mr. Wallingford? February?
March.
March. I'm sorry, March 2024. And supporting him this afternoon is our current Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Matthias Graywood. So with that, we will begin our budget, our public hearing for our proposed FY26 budget. Thank you.
Good evening.
There we go. I got it. Good evening. Mr. Pritchett, members of the board, Dr. Mrs. Brown. So tonight, I'm going to walk through a presentation that you saw at the last board meeting. I'm going to do this presentation not to the, not to the same level of depth that I did at the last meeting. I'm going to go through this presentation briefly. And then, Mr. Pritchett, you'll open the, the public hearing for, for any comments. So, here we go. So the agenda this evening is, as it was two weeks ago, we're going to talk about budget planning, our general funds, grants, and our revenue forecasts. We're going to talk, go through some expenditure items, an expenditure recap. And then I'm going to talk about a couple of additional items. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Yates. So this slide is, in a normal year, we'd have a strategic plan. That strategic plan would lead into our budget process. Because of the transition Petersburg City Schools has experienced over the past year to year and a half, that strategic planning process is not currently in place. So the next two slides I'm going to share with you identify the, the priorities that have actually guided the development of the budget as we move forward. This first slide you're familiar with. This was part of Ms. Brown's communication at the kickoff meeting at the high school. And this talks about the goals for the organization as we move forward. Enrolled, enlisted, employed, and entrepreneur. I always struggle with that word. I'm sorry. And the goal is to provide an education for students who come through Petersburg that puts them in the position that they could achieve any one of these things at the point at which they leave the school division. Next slide, please. Ms. Brown, feel free to jump in if I get any of this wrong. Do you want to go back? Okay. Next slide here. Our specific budget priorities, again, that are guiding our process this year. The first one you can see here is talent recruitment. Leaders and teachers are critical to instruction for students. The next item, improving teacher quality and academic infrastructure, followed by improvement, and that is teacher licensure and instructional framework, items like that. Building a strong division financial infrastructure, and that's both budget and day-to-day financial operations, internal controls. The next item you see here is addressing chronic absenteeism in student attendance. And then finally, the final budget priority is student social, emotional learning, mental health, and wellness. Next slide, please. This slide is, excuse me. Okay, this slide is a representation of the state budget process. The governor introduces his budget on December 18th this year, usually towards the end of December during the holidays. The House and Senate separately make amendments to that budget. Their amendments go to the conference committee. That conference committee tries to reconcile those sets of amendments. And then it goes to the governor for adoption. This next slide is a graphic representation of, of a budget process and one that we'll have in place as we move through the 26 budget process into 27. And you can see that it starts with strategic planning process not currently in place, but that will begin in April for the coming year. Those things that feed into our budget development include school board priorities, school departmental input. Those go to the superintendent, and the superintendent adds priorities. Staff will make technical adjustments like salary increase, benefit increases, other potential increases associated to things like insurance and fuel. All that information is put together. We develop budget allocations for each school. And then line item budgets are developed. Next slide, please. Okay, legislation. At the time this presentation was made, the General Assembly had provided for a 3% raise for staff, which is approximately $1.2 million or $1.15 million to Petersburg City Public Schools. The General Assembly is having some difficulty reconciling those budgets right now. And the, the slides you'll see, the next couple of slides that actually have dollars on them, have numbers on them. Those are based on information from VDOE associated to the governor's introduced budget. Next slide, please. This slide shows, and this is an important slide, actually. This shows that growth, student enrollment growth in Petersburg has accelerated over the past couple of years. It's trending upward and accelerating. The last two years on this slide are forecasts that come from VDOE. And you can see that the expectation is growth between 100 to 150 students per year. Next slide, please. This is a picture of revenues from the city, from the state, and from other sources for the Petersburg City Public Schools General Fund, our Fund One. And across the top for the governor's introduced budget, then the Senate and House versions, you can see that we expect to get from the city about $12.3 million. The, the current introduced budget, governor's introduced budget provides for about $55.8 million for a total of $68 million. The House and Senate versions add some additional funding, pushing up our total revenue, expected revenue for '26 to just a little bit over $70 million. This slide is both fiscal '25, the current year, and fiscal '26. And of note here is you can see the change, particularly at the state level. We're going to be receiving roughly $3.8 million more than we did in prior year. Yes, sir, Mr. Pritchett.
Go back to your next slide. You almost forgot to mention those.
Yeah. And I can jump in with you, Mr. Wallingford, if you want to.
Go right ahead.
Just thank you very much, Board Chair Pritchett, and School Board members. And so if you'll see on Slide nine, you see as a part of the revenue recap that the General Assembly has provided for a $1,000 bonus with no required match for identified employees. And so what I'll say is, at this moment, with that in mind, I will be bringing a recommendation for the board to consider for approval next board meeting this month, that we pass, that we fully intend to pass on that $1,000. But however, the General Assembly has identified specific employees. But just as with the $1,200 that we proposed, as you all approved as a school board, that we would give to the identified employees, the full-time, the part-time, full-time, part-time folks that we have on our, in our division that work at least six hours a day, they will be getting the $1,200 from our investments that you all approved at the last meeting. This is in addition to that. And so my recommendation is that we pass that $1,000 on to our employees and on to all of our identified employees that will match the same criteria in alignment with the code for those employees. So I will be bringing that to the board, that we will add an additional $1,000. So we have the $1,200. Then there will be an additional $1,000 that employees will get if approved by the school board. So that will equal about $2,200. And so just wanting to be very clear that, of course, the General Assembly has not given us enough money to be able to do that. We could absolutely follow the code and only, you know, pass it on to specific instructional employees and instructional support. But of course, we believe in all of our employees with the criteria that we laid out previously, that they too should have that $1,000 bonus. And so I will be bringing that recommendation, that all employees will receive that additional $1,000, which means we will have to go into our budget and find the additional funds, which will be about, about $200,000, $300,000 additional dollars that we will have to find so that we can pass it on to all of our identified employees. And so again, $1,200, thank you for the approval last board meeting. And then we'll be bringing on the 19th for an additional $1,000 to be paid out, if approved, $2,200 to all employees on March 28th, the paycheck before spring break. So just wanted to lift that so that School Board members know that that'll be coming for consideration for approval.
You need to correct that. Not $2,200 on March. It's only the $2,100. It's going to be March.
Okay. Okay. So Mr., also Board Chair Pritchett lifted, as I'm still learning the Commonwealth. He said, so can we pass it on on the 28th? I know we talked about it, team. So I guess Mr. Pritchett has said that we cannot pass that along until the governor signs off. Is that correct for the budget?
That's technically correct, yes.
So we will need to, basically won't be able to give then, based on Board Chair Pritchett's information. We won't be able to give that $1,000 on the 28th unless he signs off. And once the board, if the board approves on the, at the next meeting. However, we know that that $1,000 will be coming. Once the, the governor signs off, and then once the school board considers for approval, then we'll be passing. But we know that $1,200 will be coming on March 28th. We know the $1,200, and then the additional $1,000 is coming. So that's still exciting for our employees, that if approved, they will get an additional $1,000 at a later time. And hopefully, we can, they can get that signed quickly, and we can get, pass it on. But that'll be the recommendation.
It's depend, it's depend of which version you passes, the day they gave the date. Let me ask the Senate, because they will be available after you propose if you pass the House. It's available after the Senate.
I love my lessons that I'm always learning. Thank you very much, Board Chair Pritchett. That's wonderful. So there we go, Mr. Wallingford. So we know that ultimately, our, our employees will get the additional $1,000. It'll just depend on the House and the Senate when they sign and approve. But we know that the recommendation is going to be that we pass the $1,000 on, depending on whenever the final approval is.
So i- if I could, Mr. Pritchett, you make a really good point. The, the budget is still up in here. The governor's budget has been proposed, has been introduced. And that's what we use, that's what, those are the numbers we're going to use to build the budget currently. If the General Assembly can't get together and resolve their differences, which is, you know, what they're struggling with a bit right now, I've seen in my time, budgets not getting resolved until May, June, July, August. And I'm hoping that's not an issue here. But it is, it is possible. So you raise a really good point. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is, this is just the previous slide, but it includes fiscal '25, the current fiscal year. It includes fiscal '26. And you can see the change in revenues year over year, and the percentage changes year over year. Of note is the fact that while we're seeing a pretty good increase on the state side, our current understanding is that from the city, we were going to receive the same amount that we received last year, or in the current, excuse me, in the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a similar slide, but this is for our food service fund and our grants fund. And again, you can see those changes. Our food service fund, from a revenue and expenditure standpoint, is a very stable fund. In contrast, our grants fund over the past five years has swung wildly up and down as a result of COVID funding, ESAR, and those grants. And we're beginning to settle back into a pattern that we would have seen in, in 19, excuse me, in 2018, 2019, that timeframe. Next slide, please. So this slide represents the, the costs that really drive our changes in budgets year over year. Staff salary increases are the number one thing that impact our budgets. The General Assembly has provided for a 3% raise for all staff this year. And so that will be the primary driver. The other major drivers are liability insurance for fire and auto and those kinds of things. We are expecting right now a 4% increase. Division-wide utilities, we expect a 3% increase. Health insurance right now, our, our consultant has provided 8% as our expected increase. And the last item that you see there is what's labeled non-salary funds. And that is the monies that are provided to schools and departments that are not associated to salary and benefits. And we expect that number to go up by a number greater than 2%. If you recall, last year, there was a 1% increase on those funds. And so this year, we expect it to be a little bit higher. Next slide, please. This slide is the list that was provided at the last board meeting of those items that have been identified through a variety of sources for potential increases to the fiscal '26 budget over the '25 budget. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time, although I will walk through these. The, the first group of items are non-salary and benefit, or non-FTE-related. And the first item is a signing bonus for up to 50 certified teachers, planning for virtual academy, athletic trainers that we've actually provided funding for in the current year. But we're going to build it into the baseline budget next year. And then CIP, TIP, which stands for Capital Improvement Plan and Technology Improvement Plan. And between those two, you can see about $2.4 million. The rest of these items are individual FTEs. And you can walk down the list, supervisor of counseling. And these, again, are determined based on the priorities that you saw at the beginning of this presentation. Dean of Students at Pittman, AD extended contract for the current AD, an assistant AD, an additional staff person in HR, an assistant director of budget, parent liaisons, two, a plumber and electrician. We currently only have one plumber and one electrician in place. Data analyst. And this final item really isn't a single FTE, but it's a stipend. And that dollar amount is not included here. We haven't looked that up and made that adjustment.
Mr. Wallingford, may I jump in? Thank you very much. And so I just want to call to the community and everyone here's attention that this is the exact same presentation that Mr. Wallingford presented before. No changes have been made. We've gotten feedback from School Board members. We've gotten feedback from principals today. And so this is the next step for the community public hearing. And so based on all the feedback, we'll go back in, start cleaning up and making changes, and bring to the school board for final approval and adoption to move forward. So just know that this is what we presented before, and that none of the changes or suggestions have been integrated just yet. Thank you. So we don't have a high school basketball head coach position. That was an original error, but we left it there. But we're going to clean it up for the final proposal coming to the school board, because it is not a salary position. It is just a stipend.
Is that men or women? Boys or girls?
That is, that was intended for the high school boys' basketball coach. But all of the coach positions are just stipend positions, so that never should have been on there. That was another learning point. We just haven't taken and cleaned it up yet, based on. But we're going to, after tonight, we'll start cleaning up and bring back the final proposal.
Next slide, please. So health insurance, I'm going to talk a little bit about it, health insurance. We already mentioned that we expect health insurance costs to be increasing by approximately 8%. It is a major cost driver between that and our salary costs. They really drive our budget. Health insurance is roughly 9% of our total budget here. So it's a, it's a large, large number. This item I've mentioned a couple of times in here, I believe. Our, our contracts are not on a fiscal year basis, beginning on July 1st and running through June 30th. Our, our coverage actually begins in October 1st. And that's, that's a little unique, although there are some divisions that do it that way. That's not common in Virginia. We rely on the consultant, who actually gave me a call today. We rely on this consultant to provide us his expectation for rate increases going into, into the new year. And we typically will adjust those numbers after the fact. So if we learn that our salary, or excuse me, if we learn that our health insurance increase is 10% instead of 8, we have to adjust up, or 7% instead of 8, then we adjust down, and we actually free up a little budget authority that way. Next slide, please. Fund balance, important, important topic. In July of 2020, the city council passed a resolution allowing the school division to keep their fund balance, roll it into capital projects, and fund capital projects that way. That remained in place until 2023, when they rescinded that. And in August of this, this past August, they swept $6.1 million from our books as a result of this action. Next slide, please. This slide covers some suggestions that staff here has made that we would think, that we think would really help us from a financial management perspective. The first is to actually allow us, to have the city allow us to maintain fund balance. We're suggesting $3 million. And that net income or earnings in excess of revenue in any given year maintains that $3 million fund balance. And then, you know, kicks to CIP and TIP. So if that balance reaches 3 million, we have an extra $1 million left out of. million dollars left out of the operations. We would be able to use that for, uh, our CIP. Number three here, you can see implemented a fully funded CIP and TIP. That is something we currently don't have in place. Uh, number four, another very important item. Currently, we build a revenue-based budget. We figure out what the two numbers are, which primarily drive our budget, and that's, uh, state revenues at about 75 to 85%, and then the city transfer. Um, and once we know what the revenue is, then we go out and build our budget. The code of Virginia, I think I shared that with you a couple of meetings ago, uh, the code of Virginia suggests that the superintendent is responsible to produce a budget that meets the needs of the school, uh, school division, and so that's one of the things that we, um, suggest, uh, changing. And then finally, item number five here is an accounting issue, and that is that we intend to implement a capital projects fund for accounting purposes. Next slide is, this is our budget timeline. We are, uh, at that first bullet on the bottom, uh, at March 5th with this public hearing. Uh, on March 13th, we will present, uh, the, uh, proposed, the superintendent's proposed budget to this board, and the board will adopt that budget on the 19th. Uh, then finally, we are planning on making a presentation to City Council the first week of April. Uh, that first Tuesday, I believe, is actually April 1st. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallenford. Okay, at this time, we will open up for anyone who would like to comment or give suggestions on the presentations presented. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the draft budget?
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, and everyone in attendance. My name is Vera Lewis, and I only stand before you as an employee of 18 years. I stand before you as the Central Office PEA Representative. Two things. Um, the highly anticipated organizational chart, will that be revealed before or after the budget is passed? Second, um, I won't go back too far in history, but what I don't see reinstated, which I hope will eventually be reinstated as far as a job position, if not for this coming year, for the 27, 28, is that of the SIS specialist. The SIS specialist played a vital role in governing our data in our power school SIS. Um, upon arriving in 2006, that position was a database administrator. The database administrator was the anchor point for all data. That was the only go-to person before 2006 and when I arrived in 2006. So then as time went on, in 2009, the data analyst positions were created. First, there was one with me, and then there were two because there was a need, but the data analyst positions don't necessarily replace the SIS specialist position. It is supportive, supportive of, because although our roles are different, we all come together around the table, as do all of us in technology, because our jobs co-depend on each other. So I'm hoping that the, the job was cut, my understanding, a year or two ago, but that job position does play a vital role and it is needed back in our school division to make sure our data stays in compliance. All right, thank you.
Ms., Ms. Lewis, can you tell us what is SIS?
Student Information Systems Specialist. All right, thank you.
Good evening. The, the SIS position that she's speaking of was cut under the previous administration. It was taken out, but I talked to Ms. Davis a few months ago. She brought me in for a meeting and we had a, a discussion, and she told me that position was still there. We were just waiting for the org chart to come out just to see, um, where it fell in, but that, that position, the, the, while we were told the position was taken out, she still saw it there in the budget. And, um, I mean, what she, it was one of the positions that she, we had a discussion about. So it may be still there, I'm not sure, but, um, we can do some research to look at, and we can start with Ms. Davis because she did bring me in to have a discussion about it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Student Information Systems Specialist.
So yes, the power school person.
Yes, that will be the, the power school.
Yes, it would be the power school person to provide support and basically all technical support for the data that goes in the system and help our registers to ensure that we have correct and appropriate data in the system and provide technical support. Yes.
Is there anyone else?
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Superintendent Brown, and Board Members. I'm Frida Curtis. I live in Ward 3, um, 88 Woodmere Drive, and I am the PEA organ, member organizer. I have two questions, but one question is, we're talking about the insurance, um, health insurance. We know it's always an increase in health insurance and how much it costs, but I'm wondering, are we going to look at outbidding for other insurance companies? Are you sticking with the same, with the same insurance or what, you know, what you're going to actually do with it? Because we know the current insurance is not good for, good for our employees. So that was one of the, one question that we looking, looking at, because we get a lot of questions about it. And the second one, under looking at the, um, the bonuses or the sign-in bonuses, what is the stipulations for that? Are there going to be any guidelines for people getting those bonuses coming in? Because as we know, people, some people have gotten bonuses, sign in and, or don't stay. What are the stipulations for that?
And I'll get back to your question, Ms. Lewis, about the other question about the org chart, because I didn't get a chance to answer that, but thank you for your question. So I'll go backwards, and so, um, I'll be very honest with you about the health insurance. And so I am learning, I think at the last board meeting, I think what you're pitching asked and the board asked and what Melundy and others asked about, what are we doing about the, um, our current health, uh, our health insurance? Because I understand it's been a change every time there's a different person sitting in this seat. There's been a change for whatever the reason. And so what we were charged to do is to have HR go back and ask, and so there will be a poll survey that's going out to all employees that will be asking their opinion and feedback on the current, um, health insurance process. Also, what I'll say is I met with principals today to get their feedback on the current budget, and they pretty much in a resounding voice said they did not like the health insurance. It did not cover certain, um, pre-existing conditions. There were lots of different things that I had not heard, but they were all in a room and we were all planning together and they shared that. So that is one piece of data. So I can tell you that so far, it's not been very positive. But what I'll say is, and I have the money guy sitting in front here, who have a very different perspective on health insurance, because I think there was some savings or something that happened. And if I'm misspeaking, please help me, but there was some savings that was achieved through that, through that healthcare, um, selection. But what I'll say here without overpromising and under-delivering, what I can tell you is, is that I know that we're going to have to take a different look. And what I'll say is that when we take a different look, because we're going to get lots of feedback, I think about how this doesn't fit the current need in Petersburg, it also is going to impact budget. And so when you make a change, which you expect, there will be a cost involved, and I don't know what that looks like today, what that is passed on to, to employees, is that taken half by the board, how the school division, we're going to have to have those real conversations because we do need a very viable health insurance, um, because that's important. Because if you don't have health, you don't have anything, and you need to be able to work in a place where you have insurance that meets your needs. But I think the board has already been asking about where that is because they've gotten feedback. And so, um, Mr. Wallenford and Dr. Graywood are not feeling very comfortable about the fact that we're going to start digging deep. So just let every employee know that they're going to get a poll survey from HR. The principals were told today that's going to have them give us all the feedback on that, which means we will have to RFP it. It has to go out for process, um, and then we'll move forward. But again, it doesn't start in July. One of the things the principals asked, and I'll get back to you in a second, Ms. Davis, they, um, asked about if we had to make a change, would it be for this year? That's going to be very difficult, and the answer was no, it would have to be for FY27, which means, and we're starting to plan for that budget in May, April and May, and so we will now have time to be able to do what we need to do so that if we're going to, to shift, then we can embed it into that budget for FY27. That's the first part. Did you have a question about that before?
Yvette Wilson, um, PEA representative, also citizen of Petersburg, 234 High Street, Petersburg. And to follow up on what, uh, was discussed earlier, I think when the bid went out previously, there was a warning about being very mindful of how it's going to impact the staff, because your, 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 what you went with was a smaller pool, a smaller organization, and most of your people who were a part of the existing insurance company had their doctors already here in this region. And so when you went to Optima or Seneca, that was Tiewater area. So a lot of those people had to change doctors, and if you are a parent, like I was, when I'm comfortable with the pediatrician, I want to stick with that pediatrician. But in order to do that, I would be by, well, I would be outside the network. And so that created a problem, plus the, um, prescriptions. Because you have a higher at-risk population for health insurance, those rates are higher because there's small, fewer people. But the more people in the pool, which was in the case of, what was it, Edna, not Edna, Anthem, you have more people in the pool. So it's less money across the board for everybody. And those are the kind of decisions moving forward that I hope that you take, looking at who you're working with in Petersburg Public School, what their challenges are. High blood pressure, you know, your at-risk population, uh, diabetes, overweight, obesity, those are the kind of things that insurance companies, uh, look at as costs. And since you jumped out, good luck. We're trying to get back in, unless you have a healthcare plan to help reduce some of those numbers. You know, I know Chesterfield, because of their numbers going up when I was teaching there, they had a health field, fitness. We had Zumba in all locations, you know, trying to get those numbers down, and that cost, but the investment is in your hands now because people look for benefits when they walk in the door. A bonus is fine, but if I'm spending my bonus on healthcare costs, it's not, it's not worth, that's why I share it with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Board Chair, Pritchett, and School Members. I want to just follow up on the second part of your question related to the $1,200 bonus. Is that what you wanted to? The signing bonus for this. Okay, so the signing bonus, if we'll go back to the slide that addresses the signing bonus. So it's in the investments line. Um, I think it talks about the first 50 teachers. So we're talking about the first 50 certified teachers. So if you go to the investments line, um, slide 11 maybe? Like there. Thank you. Thank you very much. So if you take a look at the signing bonus, so this is in direct response to our quest to get more certified teachers. And so, um, in understanding, I know that Richmond City Public Schools is offering $7,500 for, therefore the first, whatever number of teachers, we want to make sure that we could compete and match that. And so we are offering the first 50 certified teachers, fully licensed teachers, a $7,500 signing bonus. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, and thank you, Ms. Lewis, following up to you. So we, I'm understanding that the budget will come next, um, for board approval, for board review and approval, um, to move to City Council on the 19th, and then we'll have, of course, April, but the plan is to roll out the new organizational chart, um, before the end of this month. We had to wait and make sure we got clearance from our attorney around some of the minor tweaks and changes, but we're going to roll that out before the end of March. So I don't know if it'll be rolled out before the board finally votes, but it will definitely be rolled out before we send it to City Council. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we close? You all good?
Sorry, I just had a quick question. Um, for the parent liaisons, so we're looking to bring in two, um, would that fall under family engagement or within? I think it will, um, if I'm not mistaken. However, will it fall under or like, would it be like neck and neck with the family engagement specialists that we have? Or how does, how would that look on the organizational chart?
So, um, that is a new, of course, from the last meeting. We brought that because what we're trying to do, it's going to be a part of family engagement, but it'll be deployed to schools. So for example, Petersburg High School, so as I'm understanding, we have our family engagement team that does a wonderful job, but some of them are paid out of certain funding sources. So for example, title funding, which means that they are attached to a school. And so they currently work here at the central offices, so they'll still be deployed. However, we want to make sure that our principals have said that they needed additional support on the ground, so we're asking for two additional liaison positions so that we can assign them specifically to a school. So one would be assigned to a high school because they are not Title I, so you cannot place a person in, in a Title I school that's funded. We can place a general funds, um, um, position there to support the on-the-ground day-to-day work. So all of that has not been, um, ironed out completely, but it is a part of the parent engagement team. And so the liaison, I think we had a position, um, HR's not here, we had a similar position already there, and we're trying to use that position, but of course, we will tweak any, um, duties and responsibilities and bring that for board review. But that is, this is an attempt to make sure that every school has a dedicated person to be able to support, and I think that this is going to help us, like especially at the high school, with funding, supporting directly at the high school. And I think, um, Dr. Gay is not here to speak more to it, um, but again, they're going to work in tandem because they're going to be a part of the engagement team.
So is it going to be more like student support was?
I don't remember what student support is. I don't know what student support was. That is an actual working directly with parents to support students. So at the school, whatever engagement activities are happening at Petersburg High School, this liaison will be working with the principal and the parents because that is going to be about Petersburg High School. So I don't know all the, honestly, I don't know yet all the different positions, um, but we are, if approved, then we'll be able to finalize a job description, roles and all of that. And of course, I'll be bringing that to the board for review, but right now we're just trying to get two additional support positions so that we can engage parents even more and touch more schools and touch more parents.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I know we were talking about the bonuses, but last year, we had a very difficult problem with the fact that different people thought they, that they were, uh, an administrator, and they were thinking to get on that level to get monies, and that caused a lot of friction. And we weren't aware of it at one time, but it did come, uh, come along, and then these individuals were not administrators for that. I think they look at it for the area which they were working in, but that- I think they look at it for the area which they were working in, but that didn't, uh, allow them to get those type of financials.
Thank you, Board Member, Lynda, if I could ask you, if I could just get a little bit more information, so you're meaning the signing bonuses specifically, or just the, the overall bonus from twenty-six, from twenty-five budget, or from this particular budget?
Yes, it just, it all was put together, and it's, I'm, I'm administrator, I'm on the, I'm on the list, and I'm on the administrative, but no, you're not in that area, you might have been one of the persons that worked in the mathematics area or another area, but it wasn't that area of, 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 as an administrator, and it did, it caused a lot of friction.
What I, what I think he's saying is the person, if I remember correctly-
Ms. Wilson, you have to come to the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. If I remember correctly, the, the person was evidently in a teaching position and received a promotion, and when they got the promotion, it took them over the administrative side, so in doing so, they missed out on that, that, that-
Teacher.
Yes, the teacher, yes, because they went to the administrative side, and they felt because of their years of experience as a teacher, they should have gotten that bonus, even though they're in a new title now, getting more, you know, eventually, hopefully, get more money there, but I think that was going from one side to the other, they felt that that should have come with them when they went, because they, they did their time-
Okay.
They wanted the money.
So their teacher-
Right.
That's correct.
That's right.
That's exactly what this is.
She's talking about, because she did, the person did call me, she was-
There were several of them.
She was in a teacher's position, she got a, she got a, um, promotion, and we had already said we were giving the teachers the, the bonus, but because she got the promotion, they told her she didn't qualify for the bonus because she was promoted to a different position.
There was, there were about two or three of those.
There were several.
So, so that's, that's great context, um, that's great information, so, Lynda, you wanted to go deeper?
Well, yeah, because I was looking at it like the individual already had the position, and you might have gotten some money, but the label of as the administrator does not make that, and, uh, to be, to be that, and that's where the confusion took place, and that is a confusion for, for, to tend, because you have not done that, but you might have been in a area of mathematics or something else, I am in this area, but you're not the administrator of that, and that caused a lot of-
Okay, so that's great information for me, so I have that, so I just wanna make sure that I'm clear, because we're proposing signing, so signing bonuses for, if approved for FY twenty-six will be only for teachers who are fully certified, who are coming into the division new, so that's everybody, so that means if you're new, that's what, that's what you're getting, you're gonna get a fifty-dollar, seventy-five-hundred-dollar bonus for signing on to work in Petersburg and you're fully certified. Everybody across the division will get twelve-hundred dollars retention bonus, regardless, if you are a teacher and you happen to get a promotion, you're still an employee, because we've already identified the criteria for if you are a full-time, a permanent part-time, full, long-term sub, you're getting the twelve-hundred dollars. We're gonna apply that same criteria, if approved, for passing on the thousand dollars whenever our government decides what they're going to do, so that should clarify that even if you get a promotion to a position, you are still in that group of approved eligible employees, because you are full-time, you are part, you are a long-term sub, you are a, a, um, six-hour, um, part-time, permanent part-time person.
But we're not stacking the debt.
Right. So-
Can I say something else? Leave this one alone, but I want you to, perception is our realities, okay, you're saying that the people coming on board, you're gonna give a bonus, now remember, they're meeting people here who've already been here a very long time, and you're only offering them, how much? Twelve-hundred dollars, so be very careful how you promote that, because it's sending some messages, coming in the door, you're not guaranteed to be here by the end of the year, but I've been here fifteen, twenty years, so just be careful how you celebrate that seven, that, that money coming in versus those people, 'cause I get it all the time, I've been here a long time and I haven't seen, and another thing I suggest you do, look at your salary scale, we talked with someone today, about looking at, making sure that the people who've been here, who've dedicated their lives here, are being justly rewarded for that, hard-working people who've been overlooked through up and down leaderships, up and down schedules, bonuses here, bonuses there, but somehow they were left behind, so, um, if you're gonna do a study-
We're doing it.
I'm gonna do a, a salary study, based on the people that you presently have in the system, you have some people who have degrees but are Paris, so how do you justify that, when they have degrees, but you have a long-term sub who isn't, and you're paying them money, you see, so you got a lot of that in your system, we heard it today when we visited a school, long conversations about that, but I know it's not gonna happen overnight, but it needs to be something that, um, I wouldn't suggest you're taught, because as you all pointed out here tonight, that's a revolving door, that should be a project assigned to somebody, I don't want y'all to spend more money on consultants, but I'm sure you have competent people who can look at that over a long period of time, on how they can best make recommendations for you to fix that.
Well, I, thank you so much for that feedback, actually, I'll go back to the last board meeting where the board approved in the investments for FY twenty-five, we already, they've already approved, I think, up to about fifty-five, sixty thousand, that we're gonna be bringing in a company to do a full comping class study this year right here, and we're gonna look at all of those things, and they'll be interviewing, from what I know about a comping class and other places that I've, the other places that I've been, and they did a comprehensive piece, they interviewed people, they talked to people, they got all that, so we're gonna have, when they're done, the expectation is that we're gonna have a comprehensive study that shows, that's gonna hopefully be able to give recommendations to address the very things that you're talking about, but we have to start, and so we've already gotten approval to go ahead and get that company and get started this spring.
And I'll share with you, and I'll depart. As a teacher in Richmond Public School for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty years, consultants came and made recommendations. When I got on the board, I could go in that closet, and all of those recommendations that were made were still in there, so if you're gonna do the study, then do the actual implo- implication, because, like I said, there are people been here, if I saw it, come and go, all of the studies, the dust and the cobwebs on those studies, and, um, and the, the actual implementation of those studies were never, because the money wasn't realized, so let's just be realistic with your employees, if people know where you're going, they'll go with you, and don't, you know, fill their heads with, oh, this study's gonna bring all the answers, it's not readily, but it gives us an opportunity to open it up and look at it closely.
Absolutely, and also an opportunity to provide phasing in recommendations over the course of certain number of years, it could be two years, three years, because typically I've seen compensation pieces, recommendations, everything doesn't happen, like you said, overnight, but you have a three to five-year piece to say, we're gonna do this the first year, the second year, the third year, so it gives people hope that we're moving, because you can't do it all at once, so I absolutely agree, so thank you, Board Chair.
And Ms. Wilson's telling the truth, I was just thinking, our last study was done under Dr. Newsome, and the board didn't receive any of those recommendations to move on salaries because the money was not there, we paid a lot of money for the study, but we didn't give any money to the employees, so it is, it's somewhere on someone's desk or on the computer, that's how we ended up like that, and I believe you all, before I came on the board, you all had some done, one done also.
Yeah, and, and, and one of the things that I think all of us knew about, if, if, if you were going to the Empire State Building and walk it up, eventually you would be tired, you definitely have to be tired, and that's what we did with these steps situations, we had people to come in at night and do things that weren't appropriate, and it didn't help us, there's no such thing as a step, that's not even in education anymore, that you went by steps, that's what made everybody go backwards, and everybody did go backwards, including myself, so that, that's something that's happened, that's something we need to not let happen again.
Gotcha, and I think it's gonna be, because we're in the budget planning process, and we're gonna hopefully push to get our comping class, we can get it ahead of preparing the next FY twenty-seven budget, so that recommendations can come to the board, and it's all tied into what's possible for FY twenty-seven, what do we wanna address for FY twenty-eight, it gives enough information before we even get into the budget process, is that right, Mr. Wallenford, so that we know that we can build in, if approved, those, some recommendations that can already be in the budget, so we don't get in that situation of, we didn't have the money, we do it ahead of the budget planning process, which is why we're doing it now, and then we can bring, and we'll have them come, for them to present those recommendations, and then we'll come as an administration and say, here's how we see the plan as year one, year two, year three, so that people can see that you all are addressing, um, what we can address within each of the budget cycles.
In agreement with everything that's been said, um, moving forward, I think we need to be very careful how we word what we're getting ready to do, because one word can make a difference, a difference, a current position will make a big difference if you move from one position to another, so one word can make a big difference, so we, we really gotta spell it out, who's eligible and, and, you know, who's not eligible, because if we just had said, in your current position, you will, you will receive this, and that would have solved that problem right there, so wherever you are, when these bonuses come out, that's your current position, and that will solve a lot of misunderstandings, thank you.
So, the last thing, Ms. Boryl, and I know that you all are gonna bring this back to us next week, and expecting the board to approve this list, do you know when you'll be able to show us, because, I don't know about other board members, I would love to vote on this, but I need to see job descriptions, I need to see what they're gonna be doing before I vote on this, and we don't have jobs.
Which one are you talking about?
The positions, the new positions, right here.
So-
Yes, yes.
So I think you all already had that, so I can bring what you all had, so we're, okay, probably, so yeah, 'cause most of these positions, I think there was an A.D. before, so what-
Not A.D., assistant A.D.
Okay, so we'll need to, yeah, Dr. Lane is working on that, so perfect, so-
We, we-
Gotcha, gotcha.
We had, we had a person in that position though, because we moved him to Vernon Johns. Ms. Green was in that position, A.D., assistant A.D.
No, we, this is a full-time position.
So, she wasn't at a full-time position, that wasn't, she was just working? And working as assistant A.D., okay, so it wasn't official.
Right.
Okay, but, um, you're saying all these positions had, we already approved them? That's what, that's what I was thinking, they won't approve, which, this is what they suggested, okay.
The additional, as we've gotten feedback, now we look at this list, 'cause which is what we're doing today, so we've gotten feedback on, okay, have we looked at SIS, have we looked at, is that twenty-six or is that twenty-seven, have we looked at X, we know that we have a gifted position that we're gonna add, so this is just what the list was that we proposed before, and so nothing has been cleaned up, so what I hear is any new positions, and we have positions that have already been in the division, we're gonna probably have to clean those up, so what I hear is, we need to go ahead and, um, provide those updated job descriptions for those roles, 'cause regardless of who sits in them, 'cause they'll have to be interviewed for, here is the role and what they'll be doing, and so that is, um, the supervisor of counseling, I know you had it, but it probably has to be updated, we have a dean of students already throughout the division, but it's gonna be for Pittman Academy, assistant A.D. is not full-time, director of budget, so we'll need to get those, I'll get with, um, Dr. Lane and the department so we can go ahead and get those, so we'll need to get those, 'cause we're gonna bring it so that, when?
You just said, you said assistant A.D. is not full-time, you mean it's full-time?
I mean, I'm sorry, it's full-time.
It's gonna be full-time.
It's, it is full-time, so that'll be a, a position that's new, that's full-time, that we'll have to tweak and change, and I don't know if there was a job description for it before she was just acting in that role, so, and apparently it's, and I thought they had that, but I don't know, maybe it's similar to what you described, okay, so we'll get those job descriptions, so we need to get those, and I need to bring those to closed session?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And that, yeah, for instance.
We will vote on them before we approve the draft, if we have draft budget that we're approving, 'cause we don't approve the final budget until the city council approves and then come back to us, right, it's the new positions that are there.
New positions that are-
And new job descriptions, right, because like you said, the supervisor of counseling, we would need to look at that, 'cause it's been a couple of years now since we had one.
Mr. Chair. And, uh, as we move forward with our plumber and our electrician, um, we may wanna put out there that we're looking for somebody that's multitask, 'cause a lot of people are hiring plumbers, electrician, they can do a little plumbing work, they can do a little carpentry work, they can do electrical work, so that gives us, uh, a better feel for people, they get more bang for our bucks, but people are out there that are multi-crafted, so most people are hiring multi-craft, and it may, it doesn't have to be a requirement, but it would be nice if we could get people in with those, uh, skills.
We, we wanna thank everyone for coming out for our public hearing, this is going in our public hearing, but board members, we need to go into a quick closed meeting to discuss personnel, and we will return to that. Okay, board members, we need a motion to go into closed, so we'll move back, Ms. Lynda.
Second.
Mr. Danes.
Pursuant to section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one of the Code of Virginia, it has been moved that the school board go into closed session pursuant to this section to discuss reassignment of an employee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, we then leave it to code.
Thank you, Ms. Wallenford.
Thank you, Ms. Lundy.
Good evening, everyone. The time now is 6:05 PM. We'd like to call our regular board meeting to order. Ms. Burrios, if you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Steven Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Paul Miles.
Here.
Mr. Kenneth Pritchett.
Here.
Mr. Cory Tucker.
Here.
Ms. Joyce Smoak Proctor.
Here.
Mr. Bernard Lundey.
Here.
Mr. Adrian Dan.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Burrios. Board members, we'll move to 1A. Approve of the agenda. If there are no changes, accept the motion.
Second.
Mr. Lundey, second by Mr. Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move to 1B. Moment of silence, Ms. Burrios.
We would like to remember the following during the moment of silence. Ms. Santi Mason and family in the passing of her uncle, Mr. Wesley W. Nicholas, on Saturday, February 15, 2025. The family of Mr. Rudolph Stevenson Jr., retired Petersburg City Public Schools Administrator, in his passing on Wednesday, February 19, 2025. The family of Dr. Robert C. Lowry, Director of Maggie L. Walker Governor's School, in his passing on Sunday, February 23, 2025. And Ms. Sophia Seaborn, former PCPS educator and family in the passing of her father, Mr. William Seaborn, on Monday, February 24, 2025.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we move to 1C. Plaids of allegiance. Mr. Miles, if you will leave the break. That's the other one standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
1D. Correspondents, any correspondents, Ms. Burrios? Thank you. Number 2, Ms. Burrios, recognitions to A.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. I am so excited tonight to have with us our Vernon Johns Middle School boys' basketball team. We're so excited that they had an undefeated season this year. And so, we want to give them a round of applause. And I want to bring the coach up and also want to bring our athletic director to the podium so that we can bring our wonderful fellows to the front so that we can celebrate you tonight. We're so very, very proud of you. Do you know how hard it is to be undefeated? I know that you all understand that it's hard to win every single game. And so, we are excited for you, so very proud. And so, this is the moment that we want to celebrate you. And so, we'll bring to the podium... Right there, right, the mic, sorry, right there. So, we'll ask our athletic director, Mr. Villalostana, to come to the front and introduce the wonderful coaches and also bring our students up forward so that we can celebrate them.
Good afternoon, School Board Chair, superintendent, school board members. It is great to have an undefeated team here in Petersburg. I believe for middle school, that's the first. That's the first. They did have a couple exhibition games where they played very well, I must say. They played against the number one eighth grader in the country, and they played well. I was, I really watched that game, and I was so impressed with, none of them backed down. You know, he gets all this notoriety, but our kids, they really stepped up and played. I think we were lost by what, five? Seven points. So, you know, it was a tremendous game, and I was just very proud to be there and just to see them really step up to the challenge. It really meant a lot. But I'm gonna shut up. At this time, the head coach, Coach Gregory, who is a graduate of Petersburg.
First, I just want to thank Ms. Green and, you know, Coach Harrison, Coach Lawson for even being in this position and being the coach of Vernon Johns Middle School. Second, I want to thank my coaching staff. Thank the players every day for giving me a reason to show up for them. It's not possible without them. I'm gonna introduce Coach Vicks and Mar Mason. Mar, it's not everybody, by the way. Trey Reeves. Zekwes Rock. David Walker. Malik McCormick. Monte Branch. Ethan Hill. Malik Tucker, Marquell Tucker, my bad. Marshawn Moore. Jermaine Sample. And Kaleel Bright.
And this is your undefeated Vernon Johns Wildcats. I would like to add and thank Mr. Mark West, a graduate of Petersburg. He donated the traveling suits that they have on.
They're gonna take a group picture of you right here. Do we have a photographer? She's gonna take it. Start right here. Start right here with the best. How you doing?
Congratulations.
All right. There you go. There you go. If you want to take, after y'all finish, she'd like to take one more picture, so don't leave.
Congratulations.
All righty. Y'all did a good job. I was at some of them games. I was at some of them games, Coach. Hey, look, they're gonna take one more picture. They're gonna take.
We're gonna take another picture with our, with our board members.
I'm so frustrated. I'm sorry. I'm not tall enough. Okay, I got everyone down. Okay, one, two, three, this way, sir.
But he gonna, see, he gonna stretch out, because he did it when little like that when he was in the, when he was in the eighth grade. He grew. When he first came out there, they were bragging. When Frank first came out there, he said, "You gonna start again." I said, "That little guy?" He said, "Yeah." But he grew. But he grew. Yeah, he grew up. Got the most.
Thank you, everyone. Next, Ms. Bradley, move to 2B.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. I am so excited. We just had our undefeated athletes from Vernon Johns Middle School, but now we have our division spelling bee winners, finalists and winners. Before we recognize our wonderful, wonderful spelling bee winners, I know that everyone knows how hard it is to be able to spell words. Even as an adult, you have to go on your phone, you have to ask AI, you have to do spell, you know, spell check on your computers. But our students actually competed as spelling bee winners. And so, they were some of the finalists, and that's pretty hard to do. And so, I just want them to know how amazing they are. And I know that parents are out in the audience, and I just want to say thank you because that is a byproduct of your support that our kids are here competing in the spelling bee for the school division. And so, with that, I'm excited to bring to the podium Mr. Paul Brown, our Chief Academic Officer, and Ms. Ebony Massey, our Director of Elementary, so that we can introduce and celebrate our wonderful spelling bee winners who were the best in the entire Petersburg City Public Schools. So, with that, thank you all for your work this year with our spelling bee, and so, we're excited to celebrate our kids. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I have to say, I said it the day of the spelling bee, but it was such a great competition. And each one of these students that we're going to recognize tonight, we have to remember that they beat out hundreds of students to be here. And then, our spelling bee winner will go on to the division championship to be able to represent Petersburg City Public Schools across the state. So, very excited. I'm going to acknowledge all of our winners, although everyone isn't here tonight. So, I will acknowledge all of our winners. As your name is called, please stand so that we can... And please come forward, okay? All right, so our school winners for Vernon Johns, we have Keisha Mukwangi. And I don't think she's here today, but congratulations. From Walnut Hill, we have Aubrey Johnson. From Lakemont, we have Dennis Paspinida.
Thank you. Come and say your name, sir, because I will definitely mess that up. Say your whole name.
My name is Dennis Paspinida.
And he is from Lakemont Elementary School. All right, and then from Pleasant Lane. Then we have Caleb Benjamin from Pleasant Lane. And then we have our district winner from Cool Spring Elementary School, and her name is Rayelle Davis. All right, and we'd like to give a moment to Ms. Kelly. She's here representing Cool Spring. She's always ready to support her students. So, congratulations to you, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening, School Board Pritchett, School Board Chair Pritchett, Vice Chair Superintendent Brown, all school board members, and our families that are online, and everybody that is here today. We are just so proud of Rayelle, and we're proud of every student that competed, because that's really what it's about, is that competition. But Rayelle has been working so hard studying. Her teacher, Ms. Farmer, has been working with her as well. And one of the things that Rayelle said that really helped her with her studying was actually one of our software programs that we use, which is Lexia. So she said that Lexia really helped her with vocabulary and also the Latin prefixes and suffixes. So it's great to see that. So we're just so proud of Rayelle, and thank you, Mom and Dad. If you could stand as well. So, thank you, and of course, all of her siblings. So we just can't wait, Rayelle, to see all the awesome work you're gonna do at the Regional Bee. Thank you. And can all the parents that are here, please come up and stand with your child? Can we get, can we get Ms. Brown and Board Chair Pritchett to take a picture with them? Everybody, everybody. Alright, everybody gather around.
That's good. That's good. You asked for it right, too. They're gonna make us, they're gonna make us get up. Okay. Alright, all of us gonna get up.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, one, two, oh, and three, look this way. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. I am excited tonight to introduce two of our newest employees that are joining the team here in Petersburg. And so tonight, we'll start with our newest member of our executive cabinet, Ms. Chelsea Van Gere, who is our new Chief Communications Officer. So we're gonna ask her to come to the podium and the mic. And so she's coming to us all the way from California. And so we are excited that she has decided to join the team. And of course, Ms. Van Gere's gonna tell you a little bit about her, her experience, and what she's bringing, and how she's excited to be a part of the team. So welcome, Ms. Van Gere, and welcome. We're so glad to have you here in Petersburg.
Well, thank you for the warm welcome this evening and this week. Thank you Board Chair, members of the School Board, Superintendent, for giving me the deep honor of being a part of this organization. You have assembled a dynamic and distinguished cabinet members that I'm so excited to work alongside and learn from, and collaborate with them to hopefully strengthen our communications. And you have an outstanding superintendent school board that I already deeply admire and look forward to working with. So thank you again for the opportunity. I come from California, as mentioned, from Lodi, California. I worked for a large public school district out there in San Joaquin County, Lodi Unified School District, and they span 350 square miles, 48 schools, 27,000 students, about 5,000 employees. I was with them for seven wonderful years. And prior to that, I worked in government affairs for about seven years as a lobbyist in Sacramento and Washington, DC, in which my clients were a portfolio of K-12 school districts and community college district clients. So I've spent my career working alongside and with public education institutions, and I love what I do. And I'm, again, just so excited and grateful to be here.
Alright, welcome.
Thank you. And Ms. Van Gere and the team is gonna help us tell the story of Petersburg and all the work that we're doing. And so we're really excited, and she is too. So welcome, welcome again. This is day three for you? Day three, yes, absolutely. And now I'm so excited to also introduce our new School Board Clerk, who has joined us from right next door in Petersburg, right next door in Dinwiddie. Ms... I am so sorry. Okay. Right next door in Dinwiddie. So we are excited. So please, Ms. Tiara. Tiara, I always mispronounce her name. It's only been three days, absolutely. Ms. Tiara, Tiara, Tiara Davis, who is our new School Board Clerk, and she's gonna come and talk a little bit about her experience. We're so excited to have her on board to support our work here in Petersburg and support the school board. And I want to thank Ms. Barrios for jumping in to support as well, coming back. So Ms. Davis, tell us a little bit more about yourself, and we're glad you're here.
Ms. Brown. Everyone. I'm sorry. I am extremely shy. And I was like, I'm not on the agenda. I'm not gonna have to say anything today. Hello. Thank you so much. I come from Chesterfield in Dinwiddie. That is where I currently reside. I have umpteen years of customer service, insurance, and legislative and regulatory experience for the past 20-plus years, five with legislative and regulatory with another agency with the state. So I'm very excited to jump on board, both feet in, and learn the ropes, so I can assist you all in doing great for Petersburg. But I'm very quiet. I have a servant's heart. I'm here to help, but I thought I was gonna be sitting off to the side. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We're so glad to have you on board. That's the last time I'll put you on the spot. So thank you to our employees. We're excited to have you on board, and we have lots of great work to do as we transform opportunities, learning, and success for every student in Petersburg City Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome. Look forward to working with you. We're moving to number three. Board members approve of the consent agenda. Three A, Ms. Brown, personnel agenda.
Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the final personnel agenda dated March 5, 2025, as provided. Also, it is the superintendent's recommendation to accept the minutes for 2225 through 2025 PCPS School Board disciplinary hearings, as provided. So that is Section A and Section B for the approval of consent agenda.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation, A and B? Move by Ms. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we move to three C, donations.
Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board accept the donations received as presented. And as you look up on the screen, I understand that there are no donations at this moment for this time period. As the team, wait a minute, let's see. Thank you, Ms. Yates and team. So for the period of February 16, 2025 to February 28, 2025, there are no donations for this period. So thank you all that continue to donate. But that is our, that is our report for this month. So it is a recommendation that the School Board accept this report with no donations as received, as presented.
So move.
Mr. Pierce, is there a second?
Second. No. Mr. Miles. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move next to D.
Thank you, School, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the purchase of services. And as you can look up on the screen, this is for the consent, for the agenda. So as they bring it up. So this is a recommendation for the School Board to approve the purchase of services for accounting and audit related to, related services. This is for any of our accounting services. So when we have investigations, when we have things related to funds and investigations that need to be done, we need to have a service already within the school division that we can tap into, so that we're not constantly looking for someone to do that work. And we already have them as a part of the work. And so this is a cooperative contract with Petersburg City Public Schools through VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation. And so we want to use that to move forward. So it is our, is the recommendation that the School Board approve the purchase of services for accounting and audit-related services. The total amount will not exceed $60,000, and the work is scheduled to be completed by 6:30, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions? If there are no questions, take a motion. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Sure.
Move by Mr. Pierce. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lundey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move to number four, Superintendent and Staff Reports, four A.
Thank you, School Board, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. Our first presentation of this evening is our MAP winter data, which of course is our universal screener that we are implementing in grades one through eight for the termination of growth and achievement related to our SOLs, related to reading and math. And so, of course, we did a presentation at the previous two board meetings regarding the fall data for our students. This is a new rollout. So now we wanted to come back and bring the winter data. If you remember, that at the time of the first presentation, it was the fall baseline data. Students were in the process of taking the winter assessment. So now we have Dr. DeCarter Jackson, our Director of Accountability, to come back and talk about how well our students have done, what growth they've had from fall to winter. Dr. Jackson, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, School Board Chair Pritchett, Vice Chair Pierce, School Board members, Superintendent Brown, all our families that assemble here with us, and all those who are joining us online. I am Dr. DeCarter Jackson. I'm excited to be able to present to you the winter MAP data. This actually has our growth point, so we can see how students are faring. Alright, first slide. So the first slide is just kind of a reminder that this MAP assessment measures both growth, and it also kind of predicts achievement, just like the SOL test. So similar to the SOL test, with the new accountability system, we will see credit for achievement as well as growth. So again, MAP is a great predictor that we're using as our screener in Petersburg City Public Schools. So the first thing we're gonna do is analyze our fall versus the winter data. Then we're gonna identify trends, strengths, and areas for improvement. And then we're gonna talk about proficiency levels and how we can make adjustments to our instruction. Next slide. As a reminder, MAP, again, is adaptive assessment for students in grades K through 12. It's used across the country in math, reading, language, arts, and science. It's administered three times a year. In Petersburg City Public Schools, we administer the MAP in math for grades, students for grades one through eight, as well as reading for students in grades two through eight. Again, it supports data-driven instruction for planning. It helps to, it helps to track students' growth. And again, most importantly, it helps predict how students will potentially perform on the standards of learning assessment. So we're gonna first focus on growth. So if you take a moment to look at this chart, it shows two different symbols. It has your blue bar graph, which actually shows the growth. And then you see the kind of orange diamonds. And that was actually where the students should have achieved. That was their predicted growth. So if you look at the chart, and you notice from grades one to seven, they're predicted to grow a lot higher in the lower grades, because they have more room for growth. As they become a little older, they know a little bit more, so their potential for growth is a little less. So I want to kind of make sure you kind of focus on that. So with that being said, it's a lot difficult for some of the lower grades to reach their growth point. So looking at math, grades three demonstrated the highest overall growth, with six growth points, although grade eight was closest to reaching their actual achievement growth in math. If you look at reading, grade eight has the highest growth, as well as exceeding their expected growth. So these trends are, is a way to help us know how we can target our instruction across all levels to both support reading and math. Next slide. Now we're gonna kind of look at it a little more closer by each grade level, to see exactly how much students grow. So we're gonna take a moment to notice the first column shows your grade level. The next column shows the number of students' growth in that event, meaning in order to show growth, they just take it both in the fall and winter. The number of students that were projected to grow, the number of students who actually met their projections, and then the percentages. So it doesn't mean that all the students didn't grow, but who actually met their projected growth. So I'm only showing who actually met their projected growth. So if we look closely right now in math overall, eighth grade exceeded their projected growth by 51%, and it's highlighted there in red for you.
Oh, the first slide, okay. I just want to highlight, in addition to Dr. Jackson, as we again look at the the blue bars and the space between the blue bars and the gold diamonds. So the gold diamonds is the target. So each student in every grade level had a target. They took MAP in the fall, and they said, "By the time you take it in the winter, here's where we expect you should be based on your grade level and how you performed the first time in the fall." How they performed in the winter is the blue bar. They, if they didn't meet their target, that's where you see the space. So all of our students showed some level of growth, but they may not have achieved the target that was set, which is those diamonds. If you look at eighth grade, what you see is our eighth grade, as Dr. Jackson said it, their growth target, the target where they should be the second time they took the assessment was already set. They actually achieved their target. There's no space between them. They exceed, absolutely. So at the eighth grade level, that tells us, so what's happening at the eighth grade? That they met the target that was set for them after they took it the first time, and they exceeded it. And then you see how far from the target seventh grade is. You see how far from the target our first and second. But again, Dr. Jackson talked about the fact that at the early grades, the bar is set extremely high for where their target should be and they're furthest away. That doesn't mean we don't have work to do, but it just gives you a visual picture of, here's where the bar is, and here's where our kids are related to where they said the assessment said we want them to be when they took the test the second time. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on that, and that we celebrated the eighth grade and took a look at, in the lower grades, what grade level is closest to their target? Third grade. If you see third grade at the elementary level, they are the closest, I think.
For math, yes.
For, for math.
And it's.
For the target that was set for them. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was really clear for everyone in the audience and in, across the division. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Superintendent just mentioned, they're gonna have the actual data to show you those numbers for how close the students were and how they fare. So for grades one, you can see that 22% of those students met that projected growth. Again, didn't mean they didn't grow, but they actually met those projections. And for math, for second grade, 19%. For third grade, 36%. Fourth grade, 30% in math. Fifth grade, 32%. Sixth grade, 36%. Seventh grade, 33%. And again, for eighth grade, they exceeded it. Over 51% of those students met that targeted growth.
So over half of our students in eighth grade, and so we see that we have, at the second grade level, we've got to dive deeper and understand only 19% of the students showed growth from fall to winter.
And as you see, Superintendent just mentioned, some of my key takeaways, of course, eighteen, our eighth grade showed growth. Definitely our third grade and sixth grade demonstrated potential and promising. And we definitely need to focus a little more on our first and second graders, and tailoring our interventions a little bit more to support them, so they can actually reach their projected growth. Similar slide, but this time focusing on math. Right here, you can see, sorry, reading. Sorry, the first one was math. Thank you. Focus a little bit more on reading. As you can see. As you can see, again, eighth grade had the highest percentage. This time, 55% of those students met their projected growth. Second grade, 25%. Third grade, 30%. Fourth grade, 27%. Fifth grade, 38%. Sixth grade, 41%. And seventh grade, 39%. So again, sixth and seventh grade, again, showing strong growth with 41 and 39%. Again, we need to focus on our third, fourth, and fifth grade. They have moderate success, but definitely our second grade has the most potential and space for growth. Key takeaway is again there, sixth and seventh grade showing strong growth, but we really need to kind of focus more improvement on our younger years, which is our second graders.
And again, the majority of our students grew.
Absolutely.
But they may not have met their growth target. And look at sixth grade at Blanford. That we're getting close to half of the students meeting their growth target. So that's what we want to, if they meet their growth target, then they're moving in the direction that's going to get them closer to showing proficiency.
So again, we look at the data, so what's the next steps? We definitely want to start implementing targeted interventions for our lower grades one and two to focus on math as well as reading for growth. We need to again celebrate our eighth graders who have actually exceeded their potential, they exceeded growth. We want to make sure we strengthen our instructional supports in grades three through seven to ensure steady progress. We want to make sure we utilize our small groups, differentiate instruction to address any learning gaps that Superintendent mentioned, that bar and how they actually have room to grow. And we want to do this using our data decision-driven. We want to again involve our families, continue to share those data reports, and provide the strategies that they can use for support at home. Again, this was focused on growth. Next slide. So now this next few slides I'm going to show you is actually how they predict, it's more focused on proficiency, how close are the students to actually passing the SOL assessment. So students took this test in the fall and in the winter. So the things that they knew in the winter, in the fall, were set at one pace. By the time the winter comes, the bar actually grows. You should know way more than in the winter than you knew in the fall. So it's not the same target. So they raised the target. By raising the target, so in the fall, you'll see for the math, we had 2.1% of our students who were showing advance. In the winter, that went down slightly, 1.6% of our students were showing advance. Similarly, with the proficiency in the fall with proficient, we had 40% of our students, again, it went down slightly to 32%. With the basic students, 37%, and that part includes, increased slightly to 42%. And then below basic also increased to 3.8%. So we definitely want those arrows to be going in the opposite direction. We want to see more increase in the blue and green areas, areas, and a decrease in our yellow and our red areas. So if we combine our proficiency, meaning those who scored advanced and those who passed, overall, 42.3% of the students in the fall were projected to pass the math, whereas in the winter, it went down slightly, only 33.7% of those students were projected to pass. So we, this definitely shows us there's more room for interventions that we need to focus on in mathematics, again, especially around our younger years. All right? Now we're going to look at it again similarly in math, I mean, in readings. This chart is similar to that in math, is kind of indicative. It shows again, advanced. We had 2.8% of the students scoring advanced in the fall, was predicted to score advanced in the fall, whereas 1.8 in the winter went down 1%. Proficiency is three point, 35.1, went down to 29.4%. Again, if you combine those together, you'll see there was a decrease from 37.9% in the fall to 31.28% in the winter, whereas the students scoring basic increased from 54.9% to 56.5%. And below basic also increased from 7.2% to 12.3%. Again, we definitely need to make sure that we're focusing our, and targeting on our interventions to make sure those arrows are going in the opposite direction. We want students to increase more in advance and proficiency and reduce the amount of students basic and below basic. So again, our overall trends, we noticed there was a decline, again, overall in math and reading. And then we want to make sure we focus our instruction to make sure we figure out what can we do to increase our instructional interventions, focusing on grades six and seven for computation, estimation, and measurements in math. Eighth grade reading, we focus on literacy comprehension, want to implement more small groups, want to actually make sure we're doing differentiating instruction. And then we want to monitor progress towards the spring to make sure our students are meeting those targets accordingly. Before I end, I do have, we were able to get a couple, I know you asked about maybe how does the staff feel about the MAP assessment? We were going around, so we were able to have a short video, maybe just two folks so far. But we do have other principals who are willing to share about MAP as well as parents who are here. I know later I'm going to get different parents to share about MAP.
I think one of the greatest benefits of the MAP data is the ability to track our students and really use that data from year to year. So after the students enter their initial assessment, we're able to look at that data and see how they progress on each, that's the whole trend for math and reading. Help them grow for them and create those instructional routes based on the scores they receive. And then using the growth they have during the rest of their main school year, we're actually able to move those groups and make decisions based on how we need those students to progress. So it's really great for us being able to see our students and track their progress from year to year, even at the beginning of next year. We'll be able to look at the data from this year and make decisions on where those students should be grouped in the class which they're taking for their benefit.
I think MAP has a lot of different benefits, but I think the ones that I, that the needs for me, one, that we can see what the kids are on a national level, how they compete against other students in their grade level. But we also see where they are from when they got here in the fall to where they are in the spring. How much information they maintain, how much knowledge they, how much knowledge they've grown in over the course of a school year. And I think that kids should have a personal best. Like they should understand that, yes, you know, you have to know what all kids your age should know, but you should also celebrate your wins. And I think MAP is an option to celebrate small wins and the growth for their personal best.
So we go back one more slide. Just want to reiterate, so principals are really using this data at this time, attending data meetings and you hear the data talks, and they're really looking at the, not just the numbers, like I said, those are numbers, but those are actually students. And those students have names. And by clicking on those, that number, the teachers actually know the names, how they can group them and support the students. So we haven't had anything this powerful in quite a while. So this instructional tool would really help us hone in on how we can support students and moving the needle. Also, I think what's important is we're really trying to firm up our relationship with parents and making sure they truly understand how to look at the MAP data, how we can support them at home. And like I said, we're reaching out to parents saying, hey, how can we support you? Do you have a level of understanding? And can we, how can we share this across all, oh, yes, venues? And here's a reminder, so we, at the last parent teacher conference, we gave out the parent reports for teachers to give to their parents. And then those who weren't able to make it in, we actually backpacked those home, actually allowed for questions, and they have been kind of flooding in. So this is a great tool. And I think Mr. Brown might want to add a few things.
And I'll add one more thing while Mr. Brown transitions. And I just want to just call the attention to, back to our investments, because I think we always should lift this data. We understand what the data says, and so how do we, in addition to these next steps, we talked about funding, one point, I think it was about 1.5 million dollars authorization for us to get a six through 12 curricular resource for reading. And remember, we don't have a consistent K, we don't have a K through 12 mathematics resource that we can put in the hands of all teachers. And so at the last board meeting, you all authorized us to be able to adopt a new resource that will be K to 12 for mathematics and then add six to 12 for reading, which is going to help us put high-quality curricular resources because we do have such a varying continuum of the types of teachers in Petersburg. And so with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Brown, but I want to call your attention to some of the things you all approved that's going to help us, you know, dive deeper and provide resources for us to teach our kids.
And I, just in addition, everything that was said, one thing is to remember that this is the first time our students are being measured in a long time where they're receiving checkpoints along the way throughout the year. So from fall, that fall data is that initial data. And typically, when kids take something new, they probably give their very best. The winter is when we have, that goes back to motivation. And so part of that is motivation where our kids are, but that winter data is so important because those are the, right now, our principals, our counselors, our teachers are having conversations with students around where they are and what they measure on MAP data. And I always go back to, as a principal, as a teacher, and I use MAP in my previous district. And one of the things, when I was a principal, I would tell the kids, and I know our principals are meeting with kids right now, going over their MAP data, and I would say to a kid, okay, how old are you? If you're in eighth grade, they would tell me I'm 14 or 13, and I would say, okay, look, look at your MAP data. So you're 14 in eighth grade and your MAP data says, hey, I'm at seventh grade. I would ask, is that a true reflection of your skill? And most of our kids would say, no, I could do better than that. Then I can have a bigger conversation with our kids to set goals. And so we have one more round of MAP data that's coming up before SOL. Our kids are setting goals for themselves so they can become, as we say, we want our kids to be independent learners, so they can have an investment in their education. So we're having our kids set goals for the next piece. If you look at where we are, I know Dr. Jackson mentioned that right now we have for MAP data about, over a little bit, over 30% of our students for reading that are in proficient or advanced. But as a principal, I'm going to look at, and as a teacher, I'm going to look at those kids that are in the basic area because those are what we call our bubble students. And what can we do to support them, to move them over the hump? And so principals are right now having tutorials. When we counsel after school today, principals like, we had tutorials set today. So principals have already put in some, some things in place to support students so we can get that growth. And one of them is tutorial. They also have put in place some workshop for teachers because in order for teachers to be able to support students, they need time to plan. So some principals are holding Saturday planning days for teachers. We're having data, how to read data and use the data in the classroom. It's a lot of new learning. So I just want to say thank you to our teachers and to our principals for taking on this new instrument that we're using. And, and we've had it before in Petersburg, my understanding, we've had it before. But taking this new, this instrument and using it to help our students become independent learners, but have, have ownership in their learning. And so I want to encourage our parents, if you have not picked up your child's parent report, please do, because it suggests some things you can do at home. In order for us to get all of our kids to advanced and proficient, it's going to be a partnership between the community, parents, and the school. And so this is, I, I'm just happy that our kids have this and that we are seeing there's a lot of potential here. And there, that's, that's what I see. We, it's given us a foundation of how we support our students and how do we plan for our kids. And I'll turn it over to questions. Stay over here.
Thank you. Mr. Lundey.
Two things. Do our kids enjoy the fact that when they are working with each other, they can actually see what's being done, the advancements?
I would say, as I visit classrooms, our kids definitely enjoy working with each other and supporting each other in the classrooms. I think that we as teachers and as educators, we have to do a better job of planning more engaging activities for them and planning those activities based on their learning style. And so we've had, if you, in the elementary school, we did our walks around Amplify, looking at what our kids were doing in the classroom. And our kids were working in small groups, they were going away partnering. I saw kids supporting students. And then at the high school and the middle school, even though we don't have MAP at the high school, it is something we want to look at because our eighth, our ninth graders and 10th graders, we don't have a true indicator of where they are in ELA and math before they get to 11th grade to have to take the SOL. And so this may open an opportunity for them. But our kids definitely support each other. And, and I think that our role is to plan more engaging activities for them, addressing their learning styles.
I, I hope that we also can continue to, the instruments that we're using for these processes, because I think that the public, the community will probably be very, very involved to see how this is taking place. Maybe that's something we can put up at different times so that they stay impressed of what's really going on.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Tucker, any questions? Ms. Proctor?
I have just a question. You mentioned as an item that there was a diminishment between winter and fall and spring. And so what were your learnings as to why that occurred?
So when you look at, and I know Dr. Jackson mentioned it, but I'll tell what learned and I'll say some other things we learned.
So it's two different focuses. So one was growth. So what that means, it wasn't necessarily a decrease in growth, they didn't meet their growth targets for growth. But as far as achievement, there was a slight diminish, but the bar was also raised. But that means, that means that's the area where we need to focus. So not everything was glows. So what you know is our advanced, number of advanced students went down as well as our proficient, 5.5 and 1%. That's an area that we can focus on to make sure that they continue to grow and be proficient, while we also add those bubble students over the hump. And again, we have to rekindle, going to relook at our focus, our instructional focus and our small groups and adding more interventions to support teachers just.
To understand how to. Know Mr. Brown talks about, again, we have different categories of teachers. We have licensed teachers, we have provisionally licensed teachers, we have long-term subs, we have day-to-day subs. And so all of the needs of pedagogy of how you teach kids is very different. And so that is something, which is why we talk about professional learning and all the things we have to do, because if you're a long-term sub and your background is not necessarily education, the way you're delivering instruction is going to look very different than a teacher that's licensed. And so I'll let Mr. Brown kind of dig a little bit deeper into that, but I just want to also talk about the support we're giving to teachers.
But I think that's, that's the opportunity where our principals right now are meeting with teachers and they are having professional development after school on Saturdays. These teachers are being paid through stipend positions. We're really trying to develop and build our teachers, give them more strategies, but looking at how they read the data, look at the data, how do they develop lesson plans? And so our teachers have really taken on the ownership of MAP and they are changing some of their ways, whether they are long-term sub or sub or a certified person. They're really taking, owning the data and saying, what can I do differently to support students? And so those are the conversations that we're having right now in schools because this data is not just a student data, it is a data around instruction. And for the central office, even for us, we're looking at what can we do better with rolling out our instructional framework? How do we, going back to, how do we pick strong instructional resources to support our kids? One of the things that we talked about is like, what do we do for math next year? And for some of our kids, they do need a math book in front of them instead of just a computer. And so we're looking at all of those things because it's not just the students' grade or score, it's our score. And so we're just trying to look at ways we can do something, things differently to support them.
Ms. Pierce?
Just one question. I think it's a quick slide that was on, but you mentioned a little bit about what we talked about family engagement.
What we talked about family engagement? The slide that I was, keep going.
Right there.
There it is. At the bottom. My curiosity would be how are we, or how are we sharing that information with parents? Because I know how difficult it can be, just to answer about parent engagement and getting parents involved, because a lot of that growth for those kids happened right at home. Sharing growth data with parents, how is that disseminated? Just, you know, kind of share with us.
And I can, and I can share some of the things I've done.
What are we doing with that to get the parents, you know, actively involved in that so they can help their, their children? Because I know when they go home, you know, there's got to be some type of connection for them to help them out.
Absolutely. That's a great question. So so far, I've know, I've already attended a few parent university sessions, whether it was in-person and online, and they were also sending the information home. The next step is to make sure that the students have those additional resources. So there was a QR code to tell parents how to help and support them, but they actually need additional supports that we can send them home, whether it's a program in school where it connects them, where they can actually work on things at home to kind of bridge that gap. And parents don't have to be the one to say, hey, I may not understand this high-level math, but I know if you get on this program for a certain amount of hours, it can help support your learning gaps and help you grow. So that's the next step that we're working on now, utilizing programs that students can also use at home to help support their growth. But we're continuing those workshops, working with parents through the university talks, whether it's online or in-person. And then again, sending the information home and some of the backpacks for those students, parents who could not make it to the conferences. So those who came to the conference, they received the information. And those ones who were not able to come, we sent that home in the backpacks and it has a code on it where they can kinda scan with their phones. They don't have a computer to kinda take them to that MAP site to support students. But we have to, it's a continuous process to make sure we don't just say it's one and done. Just keep following up and say, hey, you know, here's the MAP data, some more intervention they can do at home to help support them.
And, and this, I don't know, it might be a tough question, but what type of measuring stick is, what would you use to see just how engaged they get, how involved they get? Because we know this is important because a large part of what children learn, they learn right at home. And if they don't, if they don't get it, you know, a lot of times it's because of other types of distractions that they might have. So I was just curious to know, you know, out of all of that, do you, or will you have, or can you find a means of measuring it to see how impactful it is?
That's a great question. So I know one of the new things that we will be able to purchase is our program called AgSale, and it measures the students' productivity and it can kinda tell when hours and what times. That's something new, so we'll be able to see whether they're engaged only in school or if they're actually, actually using this tool outside of school to support those gaps. And the teacher can say, hey, I thought you were gonna go home and work on this for, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes. I haven't seen you use that. So really, we have to closely monitor those tools, not just say, hey, go home and use it. But if you don't come back and say, hey, I noticed that you're gonna go home and use it, but we haven't seen any productivity at home, having those conversations and we must monitor that in order to encourage our students to make sure that when they are actually at home, they're using it. So actually by monitoring those things is how we can say whether or not it's being done. So that's something that's actually, that's forthcoming.
Okay. And, and just lastly, hopefully, at, okay, hopefully at a later presentation, maybe that part of it can be incorporated so we can kinda take a look and see just how engaged they've become.
Now, I will say that in addition, we've asked principals to, when they are conducting their principal coffee or parent chats, our PTAs, to have conversations with parents who are there around the MAP data and how it can be used. At our last couple of community meetings with the superintendent, we actually rolled out the instructional framework informing our parents of here's how we want instruction to look. We also provided parents with a set of questions that they can use when they go in for a parent conference or there is a set of question they can ask their kids. And so all of those, we will be partnering with our parent engagement office. And we're actually gonna be creating a website where parents can have access to all of that information. But like, one of the things that parents have to do is we need our parents to get involved. And so we are not assuming that our parents don't know or know. We're providing a set of questions to ask them and say, please, when you go to a conference, you know, use some of these questions to guide you, but we really want our parents to get involved because in order for our kids to grow, we gotta have the help of our parents.
Parents, absolutely, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Ms. Dan?
Yes, for the, for our students that will be attending summer school, will this tool be used to help them during the summer?
So we have one more time for this assessment to be given, and it will be given the spring. The summer, we have not looked at that, but that is a possibility, we can check into that.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yes, yeah, leave that slide up. I have a, first of all, I like that it's showing that almost a hundred percent of the kids were tested. That's one thing I really like, I really like that. And, but I do have, it is interesting that advanced and proficient went down. And I was just wondering, because we don't want them to go, go, we, we don't want them to go down, we want them to go up at the same time, so, but, but the, the last two, below basic and basic went up. You know, just from looking at the chart, I would assume that anyone that's proficient probably will pass the SOL. You know, so we definitely wanna see that number go up. So because of that, what are we, how do you address that? How do you address that, trying to get that number up, trying to get more basic up to proficient? How are you addressing that?
There are a couple of things that should happen in, at, at the school level. So when we, when, and I'm gonna go back to using the data and what I know some principals are using the data right now, how they're using it. So principals have looked at the data and they, like, for instance, we have right now forty-one percent of our kids that are basic, and we call those the bubble students. Those are students that if we do a couple of tweaks and a couple of supports for them, we could possibly move them proficiency. So schools are inviting them to tutorials. A part of that is they're having conversations with kids because sometime you may be below basic right now, but it could be because you weren't motivated to take the assessment. And so having conversations with kids around, okay, where do you see yourself in three, in two months when we take the assessment? Part of that is having the conversation with motivation. The other part is that our teachers are looking at their lesson plans, they're redoing groups and figuring out which are kids they can focus on to move them to the next level. We, I know that a couple of schools are holding workshops and planning sessions on Saturdays to give our teachers more opportunity to spend time in the curriculum. Because part of it, in order for a teacher to truly support a student that is at basic or below basic, you gotta really understand what the curriculum is asking the students to do. And so part of that is on us. We gotta plan better as teachers. And so those are some of the things that we're doing right now. We are looking at what can we do over the summer because we will have, when we finish this, we will have overnight, because the goal was for ninety percent or more of our kids to be tested. And so we met the goal, we, and our kids are participating. Now it is, now how do we set and plan for them?
And like I said, you know, I'm really pleased that you got such a high number tested. I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's almost every year y'all did a really good job doing that. Now we gotta decide what we're gonna do with it. And see, that's the thing, and that's what we're gonna have to address. And also not just with the kids, with the teachers that's not certified and all the long-term subs. Because when we talk about staff development, you really need to address every link, not just your weakest link, every, every link. And, but the main thing, we know where we don't have certified teachers. And if we, you know, and we can focus on the kids that's in those areas also, but not just the kids, but the, but the staff. And because if we strengthening the staff, we're gonna strengthen the kids. That's the, that's the way I, that's, that's the best way we can help the kids. That's the bottom line, we can strengthen that staff and support that staff, we're gonna help those kids tremendously. But the, the, the good thing is, this is the first time, I'll tell you the honest truth. Usually I complain about data, this is the first time I've seen a high number come back like that. So I really, I'm really pleased with the, the number of kids that you tested. You gave me a really good picture of where we are.
I guess the last strategy is, which I failed to mention, that we are in the process of bringing on tutors. And so some of our kids will be working one-on-one with tutors in, in the classroom as well and after school.
Self-approval tonight.
Yes.
You know, hate to be the dead horse, but over, over again, we got people that in staff development. And I talk about spending four days a week in the school with the teachers that need help and working with those teachers because that's the only way you can really address some of the deficiencies and find out where, where, where they are to observe them and be in the classroom quite a bit because you might pick up one thing from one teacher and something else from another teacher. But if, if the more time you spend with them, you're gonna know exactly what you have when you evaluate them. But you gotta spend that time in there with those teachers. Some teachers don't need help, you can see that from the results. But the ones that do need help, those are the ones we need to focus on.
Absolutely, thank you, Boomer Miles, you're absolutely correct. I think you hit it on the mark about the different teachers that we have, like you said, certified, uncertified. If we build them up, which is why in the FY26 budget, we're trying to give seventy-five hundred dollars to certified teachers. Because if we can get even more certified teachers and our teachers are great, whether you're a long-term sub or otherwise, we are attempting to make sure that we do that. But I also wanna talk about our next level of data analysis that we're trying to do because this is just step one. We have to also look at as our strategy, which is what I'm pulling on the attendance team, how many of these basic and below basic kids missing days? How many days are they absent? That is a part of how you triangulate data, is this is just one part of data for kids. So the next one is how often are they coming to school? And I bet you if you pull out below basic, they are our high flyers. So our next level is to add more data points onto this so we have a complete picture of how Miles and how he's, why he's performing this way. Does he have a certified teacher? Is he absent a lot? Is he struggling in other mental health areas? All of those things give you a picture of kids and where they perform because all those things impact their ability to grow and become proficient. And so it is our triangulation, so that is also the next step that we're working on as well.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I have several questions. Okay, we, we're under, we're still under MOU. Can you explain to us, central office, how often are you all doing instructional walkthroughs? How often are you all in the buildings?
We're, the team is in the building all the time. So I would say weekly, almost, the team is spent in the building most of the time. I just did an instructional walk. I'm not in the building all the time, but I do know that Ms. Massey, the literacy coaches, our specialists, they're in the building because they are assigned to schools. Some days they're assigned, we support new teachers, they spend time in the classroom with new teachers, they go in and work with planning, they go to planning time. We just did an instructional walk where we are partnering with TNTP to actually go in to look at how do we support our coaches next year? So the, the data, the team, our team is actually looking at the data and saying, how can we improve some things differently to support students? And so I would say, you know, percentage of their, the percentage of their work time in schools is sixty to seventy percent of the week because the expectation is that we support schools.
Now, the individuals that we have in schools are that, I believe we have some specialists in schools, are they math reading or other?
We have some math specialists, interventionists, and we have some math coaches, we have math coaches. So schools have math, math coaches, they have a literacy coach, a reading coach, they're in the building.
So how are they assisting the teachers?
So they should be supporting and planning, and that's something principals have direction over. One of the conversations we're having as we plan for next school year is that we needed some support with teaching our coaches how to coach. Because some of our coaches need support with how do you coach? Because we, as again, we have three levels of teachers. You can't coach me the same way. And for some of our teachers, they are doing the best, they are doing the best they can. But if you are not a math person or you don't have a math background, it's no way for you to expect that they understand every strategy to support a kid that may be below level. And so part of that needs to happen in the planning time. And so what we have to do is build our coaches up to really say, when you're coaching teachers, that you're not coaching, it's not one size fit all. You may need to change your coaching, your coaching method or strategy to support based on the needs of those students. And so that's where we're looking at as well.
And Dr. Jackson, you had said that, you had talked a little bit about the parent university. When parents are out and you said some of this information was shared, who is trained that works with the parent, with the university? Who's trained to explain this MAP data to parents?
I am, so I'm the one that's been trained. I've been using MAP for quite some time in a number of different divisions, probably over fifteen, twenty years. And I haven't been in school that long.
So you go around with all of the...
So I joined the session, so when there's online, I joined the session online, whether it's there or in person. So I think the last one was at Lakemont, so different people came out from all different schools, but I was there. So, and I have also, now, I started off as the main person, but since then, I've been training coaches. And actually, they've taken off. I was in a data meeting the other day with Vernon Johns, and I'm like, wow, I'm learning more from you. He's like, Dr. Jackson's like, no, I'm not, you're not learning from me. I learn more from you because they have embraced it, they honestly have. So I started off as a guru, and I'm like, no, not anymore, you take my head from you because these coaches have really been excelling, the specialists have been excelling in literacy and in math. They're knocking on doors, okay, well, you said this, but when I look at this report, where do I see that at? How do I drill down to the exact name, how do I take, tweet these people out? So it's not just me anymore, it started off being me in early October. Now, the team has really taken over, they really have taken the lead. So we have people in the individual buildings now that can help support principals, not me because I'm one person. Started off it was me, but it has really truly branched out. But as far as those meetings, I was the main person there to help support them initially. And I do sorry, there's still, I didn't put the slide up there, but I have so many, when I say continuous PDs from beginning, even just this month, some more scheduled for March. Like, we're continuously to learn and refresh, to make sure, refresh that we're really understanding the MAP reports. That's very important, especially because it's new. And the first time you hear it is foreign, then once you actually have that data, it starts to make sense to them. So, you know, I kinda give them a pre-sequel, this, you're gonna see these reports. It didn't mean as much, but once you actually have those numbers, those numbers are students. It makes a difference. When I say you click on this number and it never changed the students' names, you see the aha for teachers. It's no more number, you don't see, you know, seventy-eight, the number seventy-eight, you see seventy-eight names. Those are students, and that's when they hit home for the teachers. That's when it makes sense for the teachers, when they actually see those names.
And so, just a suggestion, to increase parent involvement, I know we do the sessions at the schools, but have we considered going out to Penox, P K Acres, Aqua? They actually have space out there where you can have students and you can meet the parents. And the parents are right there in their neighborhood.
Yes, sir. Yes, we have, and we have a couple of community meetings that we're gonna be planning there. At our last community meeting, I actually met with, I think she's the assistant director over the two largest housing areas that we have. And I'm gonna be working with her to arrange those meetings where she's having the parents there to discuss some things with their community. But then we will partner with them and talk about those, that data point as well as attendance.
Thank you, Boer Chipperidge, that, that was the young lady that was there at the Vernon Johns, Vernon Johns community meeting. She is the one that works with the, I think, the housing support?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Okay, and one more, I promise this is it. I know we only see about one or two retired teachers coming through as tutors that the board has approved. How are we recruiting retired teachers to help get our students through? And the only reason I ask that is because Richmond just released some data and it said that most of their scores are up in all areas. And it was told to me it was because they were able to recruit retired teachers to come back to assist them. So what are we doing to recruit our teachers to come back?
That's an excellent question. I can't speak of retirees, but what I can tell you is right now, in order to get qualified tutors, we, they'll probably add a little bit more, we will partner with tutoring companies that have qualified teachers, meaning tutors. But I definitely know that if you have a retired, a retiree teacher coming in, you're definitely gonna increase student achievement, I can...
Especially if they're from Petersburg.
And they know, they know the culture. Culture, exactly.
We're gonna bring in a company, right, with some teachers or what?
We are partnering with some, yes, some organizations that have tutors that have, so that some of them are coming in that way. Some of them are retired teachers, some of them are, but I would agree that we do need to tap into that resource. So if there are retired teachers that are listening, please contact our HR department and they will be happy to assist you in assigning you with a school. So if we have retired teachers listening, we need everybody to help us with our students because retired teachers have wealth of resource and knowledge, and, and that's what we need for our students. And, and we also need retired teachers to help mentor some of our new teachers. So there may be some opportunity there as well.
Perfect, thank you. And I think Dr. Lane is in the audience, and I think I heard Boer Chipperidge say, I think we need to actively recruit. So we need to think about a campaign, and if we know of retired teachers, we can start with that list, but we also need to put out communication and start blasting out that we are interested in having our retired teachers come back and serve as tutors. And so that is something that we have at HR, we have a communications person here. So now we have another strategy that we can go out and actively recruit as well as anyone listening, but we're gonna have to go out and try to get them to come back as well.
I said it was gonna be my last one. This one, this one is dear to me, and I don't know how you all are gonna fix it, but I know how it can be fixed, but you all are gonna have to figure it out. You talked about PTAs, the PTAs are not active in those schools, I know that for a fact. You, I think you only have one that, that's, one or two that's really having meetings or whatever, but the other schools are not. So what is the, what is the plan? Because we haven't had PTAs in about three years now.
So we will, I do believe that we need to have PTAs involvement. And so that'll be a conversation that I will have with our principals because that's an instructional leadership issue. That is a principal issue, it is... It is not a division issue. The principal takes on the ownership of getting parents involved. And so I will have that conversation with the individual principals.
Thank you.
And we'll set expectations as well. We'll set expectations for PTAs around that because again, it is owned by the school.
Bernard, you left Bernard out.
At one time, one of our main things that we were doing was we were looking at our support staff that are in the classroom. Any of those persons still working with our teachers? Are they learning any of the things that our students, our teachers are doing?
Like as far as a para-professionals? Yes, and we have some paras that are just as strong, if not stronger than some of our new teachers who really are, and I can, I'm not going to name a few, but I just know some that are really strong who's helping to support those new teachers in those classrooms. Because they've been there for so long, they know just as much, if not more, honestly than the new teacher. So I have seen situations where that person is so strong in a room, it helps support. So that's why they'd say the numbers are higher in this classroom with a new teacher because this is a para that's paired with them. In some situations, I do know that.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker.
Um, I did have a question. And you mentioned iExcel, which is an amazing resource. I did have a question about it. How are we ensuring that iExcel, Xern, and Lexia are being, they are resources in the class? So how are we ensuring that the resources are not acting as the teacher in the class? Because I have, I've seen where in certain classes, iExcel has been the lesson for the day for students. So how do we ensure that that remains a resource? And I do know last year, it's a two-part question, I'm so sorry. I do know last year, we did a Lexia and Xern forum. To just piggyback off of what Board Chair Pritchard said, is there any way that we can do a Lexia or Xern or iExcel forum in the community? I know we had great participation virtually. But is that something that we can actually go into the communities and allow our parents to come, take some Chromebooks and, you know, allow the students to come? And we kind of explain to the parents how they can help their students navigate that at home?
That is a great opportunity. So your first question around iExcel or any resource being, replacing the teacher. Again, you know, and I'm just very transparent. We have three sets of teachers. And I would say if you have a seventh grade teacher who is teaching seventh grade math and that is not their content, most likely, the resource is going to be the computer-based program. It is not the teacher's fault. It is where we are in their understanding. Because one thing about iExcel is it breaks it down for a kid to understand. What we have to do better is how do we increase planning for our teachers so that they have time to wrestle with the curriculum? So they have time to learn? So if math is not your content, but you are teaching math because you care for children, then we have to figure out a way, how do we support you in that? And that's, that's, that's the reality we're in. So I can't say if you walk into one of our schools, you're not going to see that. The reality is, and for me, I would say to a teacher, if you know that your content is not as strong and you have an area of weakness in that area, then the best thing is to support the kid while they're doing, using iExcel. Because I would much rather you support the kid, guide them through a resource that can really break it down for them than leading them down the road where they don't understand and creating more misconceptions. As far as Lexia, iExcel, we have, we've been looking at our Lexia report. And one of the things that we noticed is that we have to give our teachers a chance to how to manage it because there's some nuances to Lexia that needs to be. And Xern. That needs to be, that there's some classroom management issues and needs some support with teachers. So from what I've seen, I've seen a big difference between where our teachers interact from the beginning of the year to where they are now. And that big interaction is different whether you are a long-term sub, a sub, or, or a certified person. I've seen the adults and our kids really trying for the majority. And that's something that we should be, we should be thankful for because the most part of our teachers who are working with students, they're doing the best they can where they are. And sometimes the best they can would be, I'm putting you on iExcel and I'm guiding you through it.
Well, I just wanted to say that tomorrow night, we have Family Engagement University. And Dr. Jackson's going to be there, I think, to do the map. And we are going to be working with parents on Lexia and Xern. And so as we go out in the community, we can continue to do more of that. It escapes me right this exact second.
Blanford?
Okay.
Blanford, Blanford.
Yeah, total blank right now, but it's at Blanford.
Thank you. And I want to say just to the board, I haven't had a chance to announce, but I know that. So I have been asked along with, and I'm going to be bringing Dr. Mr. Brown and Ms. Massey. We've been asked to present at a tabletop at the Virginia Association of School Superintendent's Spring Conference in Roanoke. And so we will present, which is a little weird because we haven't been here very long, but we've been asked to share the work that we're doing around Xern with, with other superintendents across the Commonwealth. So we are new at a lot of this and we're implementing some of these things. And yes, we have a lot of work to do. But some of the things that we are putting in place and we have been using before we even got here have been very powerful and supportive of kids. Has it gotten us to where we want our kids to be? Absolutely not, but we got to start. We're going to get there, but we've got to start. And so now you see, there's data in front of you. There's a tool that our kids are being, that our kids are now being measured against reading and math, against the SOL standards, and if they're growing or not. So we can actually talk about, here's how our kids are doing. Yes, we want the numbers to go up, but we got a lot of different things we need to tackle. But the fact that we're talking about it and we're saying, hey, we got to do better in X, and everybody knows what we're trying to do better in, is a step in the right direction. And so again, some of the tools that we're going to share with parents, we're going to share with other superintendents as a very new team here in Petersburg just to say, hey, we've been trying this and here's some of the results we've gotten. All to be it, no results are perfect. But it at least says that we're exposing our kids. If a teacher is putting them on a, a program, because again, we're in the age of AI. And so we understand that some of these tools are going to help our Generation Z and our, what is the other name of our kids? Gen Z and, and Alpha, Gen Alpha. So the kids that are in schools are Gen Alpha. And then of course, we have Gen Z. And they are going to learn very differently than we learned before. And so I just want to say that as we talk about the tools, we're going to be sharing one of the tools with other superintendents across the Commonwealth coming up in April at the Virginia Association of School Superintendents Meeting, representing Petersburg.
And I think the last thing I want to say is as we build our data warehouse of getting student information, like the map, the map assessment, it is connected to some of our resources that we're using in the classroom. So iExcel is connected to map data. So once we get that map data for our kids, iExcel is connected to it. So it builds a platform for those individual students as well.
Thank you all.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you all.
You know better than to ask me twice.
And if, if, if it's okay with you, before Dr. Lane leaves, I have two names to give you, two individuals that are trying to work in Petersburg.
Me, well, no.
One is actually a teacher who taught, who taught somewhere else. And he is actually here. He was certified over in Jamaica and he's here. And he's been trying to teach, but keep getting the runaround. He's turned all his information in. And then there's another retired teacher from Dinwoodie who has been trying to come in and help, but no one will call her. So we, so we have people who want to work here. It's just that we need to connect them to the right individuals.
Perfect, that works perfectly. Absolutely, we'll make sure we get that information and we'll reach out to them as well as begin a campaign to try to get some additional tutors for our team. Absolutely. All right, so was it four C, B? Okay, so very quickly, as we talk about tutoring, we'll ask Ms. Massey to come up. I think she has just one or two quick slides. This is a presentation that was requested. Of course, we know that the Virginia Commonwealth, I think the state, Virginia Department of Education, has given money called All-In Tutoring. They gave it to each school division across the Commonwealth. And so she has just one or two or three slides that explains where we are in this process in Petersburg as it relates to tapping into those funds and what are our plans moving forward as we're understanding what we've done in the past and now preparing for what we have to do in the future. Dr. Massey?
All right.
Sorry.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Brown, everyone out here in the internet world and everyone here with us today. So good evening, everyone. Can we have the next slide, please? All right, so just to give you a little bit of background today, I am here to talk about the All-In Tutoring Plan that we have for Petersburg City Public Schools. But to give you a little bit of context, way back in 2023, Governor Yonkin signed House Bill 6001. It included a significant investment in public education. The budget provided a one-time per pupil investment to support the implementation in three areas that I have listed here. The first being the Virginia Literacy Act, where you see literacy, chronic absenteeism. So we would really try to tackle our attendance issues. And also learning acceleration, which we are calling All-In Tutoring. That is what the state has identified it as. Governor Yonkin provided over $400 million across the state for this initiative. And for Petersburg, you'll see on the next slide, it was just over $3 million. The governor has asked that for attendance, we allocate about 10% of that funding. And so you'll see in a moment what our plan is for that allocation. Also 20% towards the implementation of the VLA. And you know that we implemented a new curriculum. And then also 70% towards that high-intensity tutoring. So when you look here, last year, we were able to pay for our first installment of the Amplify curriculum. This year, we were able to hire four VLA specialists. You all have asked about the support that's available in the buildings. And if you remember this summer, you all approved the positions for these specialists to help with the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. They are there to help provide support with the implementation of the curriculum, also to support our intervention programs and to support our early literacy assessments. We also were able to continue because these people were hired during ESSR, but then they were moved over. And so now we have ten early learning support assistants. And those assistants are also in our buildings to help support tutoring for students. And then we also have hired three truancy interventionists, and that was again, from last year. We're looking to make our second Amplify payment. And then our third year, which will be last year, our final year, next year, sorry, we will make our third Amplify curriculum payment. In terms of talking about tutoring, we've also partnered with our federal programs this year. And in a moment, I think Ms. Blunt will be talking about the tutors that we want to bring on. That there are about sixty-five tutors that we're looking to bring on to be able to support our students in grades K-12. And part of the All-In Tutoring is specific to help our students in grades K-8. And that is the end of that with the All-In Tutoring.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
Let's start with Mr. Miles.
Can you go back one slide? So far with the three truancy interventions, we haven't seen any improvement. What, what's going on with that? As far as attendance?
That's Mr. Brown.
Because that was one of the things I was concerned with, adding more truancy people because we haven't seen an improvement with the ones that we had. So I figured you could better use that money with other staff because we haven't seen an improvement in attendance. So when the kids are there, we have more people to work with, more so than the truancy, so.
You, I hear your point, Mr. Miles. We have, so Dr. Woods has left. And so now I will be working with the truancy officers. And we are in the process, we have, the truancy has been moved under my shop. We're looking at redoing our attendance plan, which outlines the roles and responsibility of the truancy officer. There needs to be a change in what they do and how they support schools. And so we're in the process of redoing that. We have interviews actually for our Associate Superintendent of Student Support. That is coming, that's coming this Friday. And so that person will be working with us and be over truancy. And so we're in the process of redoing our truancy and how they support schools. Because we do have a large number of kids that could be touched more. But the way it is set up currently right now, they are, it's kind of like limiting what they do. And so we're going back to look at what their roles are and how they support schools. Just being honest.
Okay. I'm going, I'm going to pass it, Ms. I'm going to leave it alone. I'm going to leave it alone. But we'll talk.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Could, could you just jog my memory on Amplify curriculum?
So the Amplify curriculum is the K-5 English curriculum that we use.
Okay.
And with that, we also, with Amplify, we have the full ELA curriculum piece for K-5, which comes along with, we have an Amplify coach from the company that comes and supports schools. And we are also working with TNTP around how do we support schools in Amplify as well.
So can I add, just add to that point? So since coming on board, Amplify was already in progress. And so Petersburg did not have a, a curricular resource for kindergarten through fifth grade reading or English Language Arts. And so they were in the process of adopting it. And so now, again, we don't have anything for 612. We have K-5, and then we don't have the math for K-12. And so the Amplify is the first step in high-quality curricular resources, which is really one of the areas of if you want to improve instruction, you got to start with a great resource that teachers and staff can utilize. So we're just now expecting hopefully to move forward with what are we going to do for six through 12? Because we don't have anything in place. But Amplify was already in progress when I came. So they had already selected a really great tool to, to roll out for kindergarten through fifth grade.
Thank you.
This appears you did.
Yes. I just want to make sure I understand. Because I was going to ask the same question about Amplify curriculum. Now, this is only for K through five. This, I just want to make sure I'm, I understand. So this, 3.5, $3,172,772 is for K through five?
Actually, this was allocated to support students. We can, especially with the tutoring, we can support students in K-8. Or actually, 3-8, I'm sorry. For the All-In Tutoring is specific for 3-8 because it was designed to help students that experienced that learning loss after COVID. And we really weren't able to make up that with just regular instruction. And so the All-In Tutoring is designed to help provide that real-time support. And they call it accelerated learning. So helping students where they are, so the tutoring can happen there. The curriculum that we purchased for Amplify is for K-5.
It's for K, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, now, you said you just, you made the first, now, these monies are just beginning to be used. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And now I'm, we're beginning to understand. But let me just say this. So this is the first actual presentation that we've had for this that we're going to expound upon. I'm, I'm just asking.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes. This is just an introduction.
Just the introduction.
This is our second, Mr. Pierce. I actually have the presentation that was given to us December the 6th of 2023.
Okay, so it was right after they got the money for this.
Right, all right. So we're going to be able to see more information generated on it. Because I know we're not going to spend a million or some odd dollars each year, and this is all we're going to see, so.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure we understood seventeen people overall that we've hired to do this. And as Mr. Miles was indicating, just, you know, we're talking about three truancy offices. And we want to see the expectations of those three truances, three truancy offices. Ten early learning support assistants. And the specifics of what they're going to be doing, where they're located, where they're going to be located, four elementary specialists, VLA specialists, and where they're going to be and how all of this is going to, kind of, we're going to expound upon all of this.
Yes, sir. The next time I come up, I can give you all of that information alongside of the resources we've mentioned, Lexia and Xern, that's what the tutors will be using. That's what the tutors will be using for the tutoring. And we can share any pertinent data. Right now, our VLA specialists are in every elementary school. And we also have our early learning support assistants. They are in three out of the four elementary schools. We have them at Pleasant's Lane, Walnut Hill, and Lakemont.
All right, I'll leave it right there for now, so we can give you an opportunity to let this work.
I appreciate that.
Questions?
Mr.? Yes, you said that you were going to back information for that. Is there any way we can get a look at the data as far as where we are with chronic absenteeism as of right now and truancy? The breakdown between the two?
We can bring that information to you, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have another question or input. Go back to those three people. How many people do we have in each build, in each elementary school for speech, reading, and math, where the kids can be pulled out of class that need help and go to them? Because when I was in school, I was specialhead for reading. And they pulled me out of class, one hour every day to go to a reading specialist from second grade through sixth grade till they got me on level. So I spent an hour each day, Monday through Friday, with a reading specialist in the library. And they would pull certain kids out of class that were behind, that would go there. Same thing with math, same thing with speech. And so, you know, that would, those three truancy people, we could probably get some. Hey, look, I'm not really big on that, because when the kid, we know we can mentor them and tutor them and teach them when they're there. And the thing is that, and we have a problem with truancy, but I don't think truancy specialist is going to really help improve truancy. Because I have seen that in the four years since I've been here. So I know that outreach, you know, get them while they're there, raise them GPA. That might encourage them to come to school, because you're working with them individually, you know? So that might be a better use of the funds. Getting more people in there to work with the kids, pulling them out of class, working with them. Because that's what they did with me. And when, once they got me on level, bam, I hit the road running, because I felt good about myself. So it's very important to use the funds, that way you're going to get the most mileage out of it.
So thank you, Mr. Miles, for that. I also want to just, I go back to what Patricia shared, that this is, I'm assuming, this is the plan that was presented back in 2023. So all of these things, the intruancy interventions, all the things listed here was a part of the plan of whoever developed the plan back in 2023. And so that's what it says, that this is what Petersburg submitted, that we would, whether I was here or not, we would implement. So right now, coming into the fold, we're implementing what was presented to the state as to how Petersburg would spend the money. So I hear what you're saying around truancy interventions and those things. But this is what we reported that we were going to do? And so I don't know about, you know, the ability to make adjustments or any of that. So we're rolling out.
Well, how about for 2026? I mean, 25, 26?
And so, again, you know, so it's for three years. And so now, given feedback, now we can find out what are our options now to tweaks, now that we have a different team together and looking at some of the things that we see from that perspective versus we're implementing what was presented to the state in 2023. But this is good feedback around next steps. If we can figure out what our next steps and what our possibilities are for making any adjustments.
And this being a grant, Mr. Miles, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this being a grant, the 17 positions after 2026 are going to be correct? Because if you would have to use local funds, yes, we felt as though they were needed.
Yes.
We were to find the funding. And when we voted, and Mr. Miles, he was here also, when we voted, and Mr. Miles is correct, when we voted for the truancy intervention specialist, what did they call the truancy?
Yeah.
We thought sure that someone would have them to hit the ground, to make sure, go out and make sure that our kids were coming to school. We just had a student.
I had a concern then.
Two students that had missed 50, 60 days. And the question was.
I had the same concern.
Have the parent been to court? How in the world do a child miss 50 days when there's no documentation in the record that anyone did anything with the parent?
Yes, sir. And that's one of the reasons I stated that we are in the process of revamping their roles and responsibility. Because if we have truancy officers, they should be involved in the beginning. And I've said to them, when I just met with truancy officers, maybe like three weeks ago, and I said to them, you should be involved. You can't be tier three, a tier three support, and you don't know what's happening at tier one. What's happening at the regular level with principals? Are you meeting with principals? How are you supporting, getting, processing that paperwork? And so that's one of the reasons we're going to be redoing that attendance protocol that was introduced to the board earlier in the fall. We're in the process of redoing that. And part of that is going to be, if we, going back to Mr. Miles, if we are keeping our truancy officers because of the grant, then we can tweak their roles and responsibilities. And so that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at.
Ms. Wilson, you have a question? You would need to come to the mic.
Your programs, I know you all were saying, bring the teachers on. First, you have to talk about COVID and how is COVID-free? Because I think some of my old colleagues, that was their fear, coming back into the classroom and exposure to all of these new things that are coming out. So once you, maybe a positive campaign, start small and grow. And they may decide to, you know, come on back into the classroom. It'd pay me. But I encourage you all to start that way. I think what you are doing is making an effort to try to reach out to the parents. But I also want to remind you, from an educator's perspective, I mean, learning has to be relative for children to hold on to it. And I see a lot of assessments going on, but there's no relevancy. Children have to, well, why am I doing this? I had a teacher used to tell me to carry over, you know, when you're doing math. Carry it over. But why? Why do I have to carry that one over? No one ever explained to me that I was changing tens to. Relevancy. When I did fractions, we did pizza. So they could see what a third, a half, you know? It sticks to them and it stays with them. And so we can assess them till they blew in the face. But if it's not relative, relative to them in their day-to-day life application, most of the times, you can teach. But if they can't apply the skills, they have not learned it. So we need to do a better job in doing that. I know when we were working with Virginia State and Petersburg with some teachers who were just coming in, I would hear them say, well, I did the lesson plan as they directed me to. They didn't know the purpose of what the lesson plan was, the structure. So they didn't have those basic fundamentals that you get when you go to a educational program. You know, the rudimentary, the objective, the skill. Well, he just told me to do that, or she just told me, but why are you doing? I don't know. It was just, that's what was required of me. So when you start working with teachers, I think there's an opportunity for everybody to do a self-assessment. What do I know? What do I need help with? Because coming in there telling them, you're going to do this, this, and this, I need to know what my strengths and weaknesses are, so that you can better assist me, use the time and the resources that are available to help me be a more model, I mean, a better instructor for my students. And if you do that, there's more confidence that will be acquired by that teacher. You all have a challenge with the individuals that you have in the classrooms right now. Because they don't have me or Frida or those people to mentor them like we had. Girl, don't you do that, that child gonna run out that room. Here's what you do. They don't have those anymore. And until you bring them back in to shoulder, to shoulder them with the new stuff, because that's a whole lot of new stuff. And you're bringing these old heads back in to try to get them to do new stuff. Good luck with that. Because they're going to pull out those purple passion papers. So just be mindful. It worked for me, it been here 200 years. You'll get that. Just help them keep the eye on the prize, you know? Because you remind them that these children are in the 21st century, and they have to learn that way. And they have to dwell in a world like that. And if you want to be the support that we need you to be, here's where we have to go. So that's what I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good information.
We appreciate it.
No more questions?
Then no more questions, that's right.
So I don't have a question, I just have a statement, really. I'm excited about seeing the direction that you're going to take truancy in, because truancy shifted drastically this year compared to where it was last year. All the prior years, I personally work with truancy, so I know what they're capable of doing. If I could suggest anything, it would be to go back to the drawing board, as you stated that you were going to do to rebuild it. But I would go to the courts and have a sit-down and another conversation. Because I think when the responsibilities were changed for our truancy officers, as was the expectations for the courts. So I would just suggest that we, because it is a grant, so they're going to be around for at least another year or two. So I would just suggest that we go back to the courts and we have another conversation on how, because from speaking with parents that have been met with truancy, I know that it is impactful when it's done the right way. We don't want to put fear in the parents of them going to jail or in the students of their parents going to jail. But if we offer a different way when it comes to involving the courts and involving truancy, I think that it'll be successful. So I did want to just share that.
I believe I judged Cheryl Wilson.
Is it?
Thank you for telling me.
Sister-in-law.
We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Board Chair, Patricia, and School Board members. So right now, we have our next federal programs investment from Ms. April Blunt. And I think she is, she had to join virtually, so she is on. So she is going to just bring very quickly just our investments that we're asking the board to consider for approval related to the funds that we want to expend for several areas. So thank you, Ms. Blunt. I know that you couldn't be here today. We wanted to make sure that we got this presented to the board so they could understand exactly what we're proposing to spend.
Blunt, I think she is, she had to join virtually, so she is on. So she is going to just bring very quickly just our investments that we're asking the board to consider for approval relating to the funds that we want to spend for several areas. So thank you, Ms. Blunt, that you couldn't be here. Because we wanted to make sure that we got this presented to the board so they could understand exactly what we're proposing to spend.
I can hear you repeating, sorry about that. Good evening, Chair Patricia, Vice Chair Pierce, community members, Superintendent Ms. Brown, and colleagues. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay today.
Yes.
I had the opportunity of just presenting some information that we have that will sort of tie into everything that you've heard tonight. Some of the things that I will be covering is school improvement, extended learning, contracted support approval that we need to receive from you. One of the nice things that we were able to receive to help support our students is some Title I school improvement money. As many of you know, our district already receives Title I money. Title I school improvement grants are additional support. We have two types of schools in our division, which is CSI schools and TSI schools. The CSI schools are comprehensive support schools. And these schools are the lowest 5% of the schools in the district. And so we were able to apply for some funds. Dr. Jackson, the Director of Accountability, worked hard with the schools to identify needs. And some of the needs that you heard today are things that you already asked questions about, that they will be using the funds for. The other type of schools that we have is TSI schools. And those are targeted support and improvement schools. And those are schools that, in one form or another, showed underperformance. And funds were available to really support them, to make sure that we consistently support those schools. The TSI schools were only eligible to apply for up to $50,000. And as the chart in front of you shows, we have Pleasant's Lane, Lakemont, and Vernon Jones, who was able to receive funding as a CSI school, and Walnut Hill and Cool Spring, who also received funds as a TSI school. In total, we received $656,171. On the left there, you will see the timeline of events of how we were supported by VDOB to apply for these grants and what we did internally to work with our schools. Dr. Jackson headed that up with the CSI department, meeting with principals to really identify their needs, sort of based on the data that they had in front of them. So everything that we're going to purchase using these funds has already been approved by the state, because it did have to be approved before we were able to say, yes, we are going to use these funds. So in our model here, we use our local funds first, Title I funds second, and then like our school improvement funds as a third layer of support. We also have the opportunity to apply for extended learning grants. Many of you may remember that we had these in the past. And so this year, we applied for three, and they were broke up sort of differently. Two of the people that spearheaded this, these activities, and will be the grant manager. And just to let you know, for the school improvement grant, we will have Dr. Jackson as the grant manager, working with the principals to make sure that the purchase gets spent on the items that has been approved by the state. So with this extended learning grant, we have two sort of grant managers there. Ms. Massey will be working with our elementary schools, and Ms. Lowry will be working with our secondary schools. So the three grant opportunities that we have is the planning grant, which is a pilot program grant. And this grant was one that the Virginia Department of Education really recommended us look into and explore. It's where we provide 20 extra days of instructional opportunities for our students. They wanted us to look at having a 200-day model of implementation that will provide our students with, you know, some additional opportunities for targeted interventions, enrichment, deeper engagement with this new curriculum, and just the support that they need. That planning grant is $50,000, and it will be focused to start with Pleasant's Lane Elementary School. The next grant opportunity that we've had an opportunity to receive money for is the Elementary Extended Learning Grant. And its focus, or the focus of it is STEAM, STEAM Ahead. And it's going to focus on enrichment initiatives for our elementary schools to make sure that they're successful. And we'll go into details of what activities and supports will be available on the next slide. Our secondary purpose of our grant that we have applied for will be enhancing student support through after-school and summer programs with a three-E Ready-for-Life format. Enroll, will focus on enrolled, employed, and enlisted career explorations for our students. Both of these two programs that we have for the elementary and secondary will focus on providing additional after-school opportunities for our students. And like I said, we met with principals to talk about what it would look like in their school. So for the elementary, the STEAM After-School Club, the After-School STEAM Club features, you know, four different themes, one per quarter, that the students will be able to participate in. We will have STEAM Summer Exploration Camps that will be two to eight days a week that are with some of our local partners that we partnered with before, where the kids, you know, gave great feedback on how it helped them and engaged them. And then both of the grants, as you see, have a component on professional development, where we make sure that we invest in our students, in our teachers, and our teachers that are participating in the academy. And our teachers that are participating in the academy, and our other teachers. Because we want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. From a secondary perspective, um, it's the same format, um, of what we will be doing to support our kids. The one thing that we can share is for our some, or our elementary program, the focus will be a lot on our fourth and fifth grade students. But, you know, other students will have an opportunity to present. As you can see, um, at the bottom of the slide, our elementary schools were awarded 736,000 dollars, which we would like for you to approve tonight. Um, our secondary program applied and was awarded for about 640,000 dollars. For a total with these three programs of 1,377,000 dollars. And like I said before, we will have our division, um, grant manager as our Director of Elementary Education, to make sure that everything that we put in these programs, we actually implement. And for our secondary school, we have our Director of Secondary Education, who will be overseeing it.
Thank you, Ms. Blunt, I want to just add, can she hear me?
What we have up here is, um, one of the things that Virginia has required is that all of our teachers, um, do some type of literacy, professional learning. Um, and so what we're able to do to encourage that is provide a one-time stipend opportunity, if approv-, if approved by the board, um, for our certified and provisionally licensed teachers, um, to earn some additional funding. Um, one of these, one thing to focus on or to, to know is it's only for certified and provisionally licensed teachers. Um, teachers will have an opportunity to, um, earn up to 2,500 dollars if approved. It's about 278 dollars per module. And they would have about nine modules that they could complete. One of the things that they must do is they must submit a copy of the certificate from each module to be considered for the payment. So they have nine modules that they're eligible, um, to complete. Um, wh-, what the training will be focusing on is, um, the K-8 teachers, reading specialists, um, special education teachers, ESL teachers, to take some free online Canvas courses, um, that are out there and provided for them. This one-time stipend incentive, um, would be available for anybody, um, that meets the criteria that will complete their training by August of 2025. And all of their training must be completed by that. Um, we must receive a copy of their certificates. And if we do receive that, and, um, Ms. Massey and I think Ms. Lowry will be working together to make sure that we received all the information. If we receive all the information by the August 1st deadline, um, and in intent that they will be returning to work on August 2025, um, they will receive the 2,500 or however many modules that they completed, um, to gain the 278 dollars per module in their paycheck on September the 15th. So, right now, we have, um, targeted about 50 teachers, where we'll be using Title I and Title II funds, which will be an estimate of 125,000. And the next slides that I have, these next slides that I'm bringing to you, um, are proposals that I think you also have, where we're asking for approval, um, to purchase some items. These items that we are asking to purchase, um, are directly going to be used for our students. Um, the first item that we have up there, and I think you also have the sheet probably in front of you, is, um, Chromebook costs. We want to make sure that our division is one-to-one with Chromebooks. And what that means is, is we have, um, a classroom set for all of our students in the class, and they have the ability to take Chromebooks home, to learn and work with their parents. And so, that is very important. Right now, we do not have that opportunity for families to have, or students to have Chromebooks in the class and to take one home, um, if needed. They would do it through a checkout system. So we would like for you to consider, um, us to be able to purchase the 3,000 Chromebooks using Title I funds. And that's going to be approximately 1,000, oh, excuse me, 1,163,000. The next thing that you heard tonight that, um, we would like to utilize our funds for, and this will be using Title I funds in some cases, um, I think this one is all using Title I funds. It's to have the university instructors come in and support our students. Um, they will be providing us with some tutors. The cost of this service is 537,000 dollars, and about that, what, in nine, 537 and 900 dollars. And we would like for you to consider approving this. These tutors would be spread out through our elementary and middle school. And the last contract that, um, we would like to have approved is our Axiom Tutors Contract. And this one, we will have a lot more, um, tutors that will be provided. Um, but our CNI team, along with our Accountability Department, will be collaborating with our leaders, and they've already have developed plans to utilize all these tutor, tutor, sorry. Um, this contract right now is about 800,000 dollars. Um, it's for after-school and during-the-day tutors at our different schools. Um, just showing you here, it shows the quantity, um, that all the schools will receive if this is approved. We will be using Title I funds, SIG funds, and ARDT funds, um, if this is approved. All of these contracts or services, um, are, we've worked with our, um, contracting officer, just to make sure, you know, we use, um, state contracts and/or cooperative contracts. And so, at this time, we would just like to see if we have the board's approval, um, or can move this to action item to be approved. And these, um, items, um, are definitely things that you heard tonight will support our students and make sure that they have the adequate resources that they need, um, along with the teachers. Are there any questions? And these, um, items, um, are definitely things that you heard tonight will support our students and make sure that they have the adequate resources that they need.
Yes, um, can you go back to the, uh, last page? Um, it was very good on the last page, no, no, what, right? Yeah, right there, it shows that I'm getting 15 tutors, um, 25 hours per week for 14 weeks. Now, go to the next page, I see what I'm getting for my money there. Now, on this one, where is it on this one? Does it show it? Because I, it's so small, I can't read it. How many tutors? So it's saying... It said quantity, okay, the other one had tutors, hours, and weeks. It had it all, I just want to know what we're getting on this one.
Yes, this one, this one, we're receiving 15 to 17 tutors. It is two different companies with different, um, pricing structures. Um, and based on, you know, just what's allowed for the state contract.
Okay.
Um, because one company...
I see the number of tutors. What I don't see is the number of hours and how long the contract will last, how many weeks, just like the other one. So, so how many hours per week and how many weeks? That's what I can't see, it's so small, I can't see that. So the other one was perfectly clear, 15 tutors, um, 25 hours per week, um, in, in, what, 14 weeks? Okay, now this one, that's why I'm trying to see what I'm getting for my money, that's all.
And this one, the CNI team is there, but this one mimics that, um, the same hours. It's just a s-, a smaller number of tutors.
Okay, well, just being a contractual person myself, if it's not in writing, it's not going to happen. I would just like to see it in writing, that's all. Just so, I would like the hours and number of weeks that the contract lasts on the contract, so I know what I'm getting, so I can hold them accountable, that's all.
And on the contract itself, it does have the hours. This is just the snippet, but we can definitely, um, put the snippet on there for you.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Blunt, if we could go back, if we could, oh, sorry. If we could scroll back to the very beginning of the presentation, I just want to highlight for our board members to the two grants. I think, I think we, I just want to reiterate, and I just want to congratulate the team, because we just got word that we have been awarded our extended learning grants. The team worked a couple of weeks ago, trying to really work with the Virginia Department of Education, the Office of School Quality, and Dr. Ballard and that team. They really wanted to see if Petersburg would have, um, enough, um, you know, work and time to actually go after doing something different. So one of the things I want to highlight is, first, we got our, we got our extended learning grant. So the first one, if you go back to that, go to the next one, it talks about the fact that we're going to be able to provide a club for our students at the elementary level. And I know that you all read that, but I just want to highlight that we're going to be able to provide a club focused on STEAM for our kids. We're going to be able to give them some experiences, and I want to call your attention to some of the, some of the partners that we're going to actually be working with as well. So we're doing the elementary level, where you're going to see the full STEAM Ahead. If you look at the activities, so we wrote these grants a couple of weeks ago, we submitted them. We didn't know if we were going to get funded, so we're going to have a STEAM After School Club. We've talked about, again, my, my vision is around transforming opportunities, learning, and success for every student in Petersburg. So we're going to provide an after-school club that's focused on STEAM. And so they'll get four district thematic units, and each of them are going to be aligned to our SOLs. Then, as a part of that, we're going to have a three-prong for that. Then, those will then provide a club. Then, in the summer, so the club is during the school year. Then, in the summer, we're going to provide a two-to-eight day camp. So we're going to provide a camp, a STEAM exploration camp, that includes field experiences to the James River, and our students will investigate things in their very own habitat. So that's the second part of the grant that we wrote around elementary. Then, we're going to take, we're going to have kids for our, for our club. We're going to do summer camps, and then we're going to focus on our educators. So now you're going to have professional development for our educators, and we're going to have a teacher academy. And so in that teacher academy, everyone who's hired to work at, to work and support the club, and to work in the STEAM camp, they're going to get professional learning on how you actively integrate reading skills into your work in the STEAM club with our students. So we'll have students will have an opportunity to actually be a part of a club at the elementary level. And I know that we don't have a lot of clubs at the elementary level. So this is our first step to transforming opportunities for kids. That's the first part of the learning grant that we just got, um, funded for through VDOE. The second part is for the secondary. And so at the secondary level, you see that we, they have in Virginia, the three-ready, three-E Ready For Life After School Program, where they're focusing on their three E's and their five C's. And so what will happen is, they'll get an opportunity to have an after-school program at the high school and at the middle school level. And I know we don't have a lot of after-school programs at the middle and high school level. So this is going to provide that opportunity for us to be able to have, make sure that each school gets the opportunity to have programming. And the second part of that is, they're going to have summer camps for CTE and STEAM at the middle and high school level. And that'll be different. And so we'll be able to have a summer camp where they'll get field trip opportunities, and we're going to partner with these people. And we told the VDOE, who we're going to partner with. We're going to partner with the City of Petersburg, we're going to partner with Richard Bland College, Virginia Commonwealth, Virginia State, Virginia Tech, um, University of Mary Washington. So we tried to put into the grant, these are people that we like to connect with, because we always talk about that engagement piece. We want to make sure that our community is involved. And at the, at the middle and high school level, three-prong, we're going to have professional development for educators. So again, clubs for kids, summer camps for kids, and then professional learning for our adults, is how I would categorize the grants that we applied for. And here are the schools where you're going to see it happen and the funding. So congratulations to the team, because I know they were working very, very hard on it, and we didn't know if the state was going to approve it. So we're really excited about that, and we just got that information, and that's what's going to be rolling out different in Petersburg. Now, the second part of this extended learning grant is the fact that I know that, I know that in Richmond's, next slide, I understand that in, um, Richmond City Public Schools, they have an extended school year for some of their schools. And so, they start school, I think it's about, what, 20 days early for specific schools, so that students in that school get more opportunities for learning. So instead of getting, let's just say it's 180-day school day, they're not going to get 180 days, they're going to get 20 more days. And so, to be very honest with you, I think it would have been, I think there was a thought that we would do it next year. But as superintendent and working with the team, I knew we weren't quite ready for that, to roll that out in July. And so what we did was, we applied for a planning grant. So we're going to spend this year planning for the rollout, and we're going to start with one school. So that we can learn, we can tweak, and we can be ready to add the next elementary and the next elementary. So this planning grant for this year is to begin to prepare by providing outreach to the, to parents, so we can talk about Pleasant Lane, that we're going to start school in July next year for Pleasant Lane, because we're going to give your kids 20 more days of additional learning. And so we have to get feedback from community, we got to get feedback from teachers, we got to do that process before we can roll it out. So instead of going full speed ahead, which I think that was the thought, that we just said, hey, honestly, I have to be honest with you, we're not ready for that. We're going to plan so we can get the voices of everybody who it's going to impact, because Pleasant Lane will be on a different schedule than the other elementary schools. And we have to bring that to the board to discuss once we've planned it out and it's ready to go. So, parents, and so I wanted to just call your attention, not to go back over it, but I just wanted to highlight those things as, so that you all understand that that's what we got in our extended learning grants. And VDOE will be announcing that we got those grants soon. And so I wanted you to know those three components that are a part of it. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Ms. Blunt. I'll start to my left this time. Any questions over here? No question? Any questions to my right?
Well, I'm very supportive. Oh, no question? Turn your mic off. Yeah, I do have a question. I do have a question. This question is, when we, because I like what you presented. At the same time, when we make these decisions, I want to make sure that the staff that's going to be doing this bought into it. So the thing is, is that you might have some staff at that school that decide, I don't want to be at Pleasant Lane. You'll have others to say, I would like to be a part of it. And the thing is, is that we would like to, 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 to do that, and make sure that we do that. So, a lot of times, people feel like they're just getting pushed around, and they're not a part of the decision-making. But it's, it's a different group when they buy into it. When we have our, our, our staff buying into it, or it's, it's, the outcome is totally different. It's totally different. But, to make an effort, even though it's at an inconvenience to some people, to make this type of effort is, speaks for itself. And I like to see, that's the type of person I am. I take the initiative to go above and beyond and do what's needed for the clientele that we have here in the city. And if can't nobody see that, it's because that's their laziness. Because sometimes you got to help somebody, you got to inconvenience yourself. And if you're willing to inconvenience yourself, and, and the people that are going to buy into it, we get enough people to buy into it, it's going to work. But it's a trial basis, but it's something, you, you trying something different, and I, and I love it.
Question, I have a question about the, the funding. If we, if we're going to implement the 200-day model, will the state continue to buy the grant for the extra 20 days for teachers?
He said yes.
That's something we apply for every year or what?
So for this year, we are applying for, we're not saying that we're going to, Pleasant Lane will be 20 days next year. What we're saying is, we're going to start the conversation around exploring it. In order for that to happen, there has to be buy-in from the parents, there has to be buy-in from the staff. The state outlines the, the participation rate of staff that says, I want to do this, the parents want to do this, because those kids are going to be locked in. So it's like, about, I think it's like 95% has to buy in for it. And so for this year, it's really, they're giving, the state is giving us money to say, let's see if there's interest in this. And so, this is not something that we have made a decision to do. It is something we're exploring as an option, and we, we started at Pleasant Lane. But once, if, if the parents, the staff, um, and from our feedback, and they decide that this is something what they want to do, the state, we will, we will do another amendment to our grant to extend, to pay for it, yes. I'm not sure the number of years. I'm not sure.
Three years. Three years.
And you know, and trust me, I'm going to be honest with you. We're going to do it, and they're going to make us do it because they, if you look at this, if you have been sitting here, they're pouring a lot of money and giving us a lot of money. I've never seen as much money come through here. We're getting a lot of funding. They're going to expect a lot from us because they're putting a lot of money into us.
Yes, sir.
They're going to look for the outcome.
And originally, when we, you know, there was a conversation around trying to do it this year, and there was pushback. And I just said, no, we're not doing it this year because we're not ready as a team. And so, we, because we are not ready as a team. There's some things, there's a lot of things that have to be in place to support additional 20 days. And that is, you have to have buy-in. You have to buy, have buy-in of the staff, the students, and the community. And then we have to look at our infrastructure. How do we support that program with transportation? Because we know also with enrollment. So all those things take place, and so that's part of the planning piece.
Can you talk about how Pleasant Lane was the planning year school? Because I know we looked at some data as to, you know, why we chose Pleasant Lane related to some different things, attendance and some other data points.
We looked at our attendance. We looked at our different subgroups in the school. And we looked at the capacity of our new leader at the school as well to handle those situations. So that's why we looked at it as a pilot project. And really, it's to gain interest, to see if there's interest in our community for this to happen.
And we'll visit, I think Richmond City Public Schools will do some visits to see. And I think we're connecting with some of that community because I think they, the state offered up some...
So I actually had a chance to meet with the CAO for Richmond, and, and they kind of shared some of their lessons learned. And that's why we wanted to do a planning year. Because it's something that you just don't rush into because you're impacting the way parents plan their year, their summer vacation, all of that. And, and you need to see what's the benefit of it. And so we need some time as a team to figure out all of those pitfalls and how do we support because it is, it is additional 20 days. We, when we think about it, we do summer school and some of our kids attend, but a lot of our kids don't attend summer school. But it is an additional 20 days that we're adding to one school in our division, and what would that look like for the other schools?
Transportation and all the other things.
Switch over to the other school if they don't like it. So all those things have to take place because it has to be a commitment.
A quick question. Does Pleasant Lane still have a parent-teacher, is it parent-teacher? Or an association?
All of them supposed to.
They started one of the pre-teams.
So from, from my understanding, they do still have a PTA, but it is currently at a standstill. And so they are working to try to get it back up and going, but it is at a standstill as of right now.
And so Mr. Brown will be resetting some expectations.
Because last year, they, amazing work. And she's still the president, and she's still willing and trying. But I think, you know, she just, they, the PTA hit a bump in the road. And I think they're working actively to get it back on track. And they're working with Cool Springs PTA as well so that they can work through the kinks of what's going on.
So when we start the planning piece, that, that, that conversation around, now that we have been granted the money, now the next piece is what do we plan out? Because it will require us to hold multiple community meetings for parents to come out. We will require us to go to the community because we have some parents that may not participate. So there is a goal of having support. You, I, I want to say 95% of the parents have to commit to it in order for us to even consider being the extended 20 days. So that's part of the planning piece, is getting that buy-in and documenting that buy-in and those community, having those conversations. So that's, that's the plan. So the plan for next year, now we've got the money, now we got to plan out how we're going to get the input from parents.
So I do have a question. When we did the year-round school, will we allow the same, even at the time, but will we allow teachers to choose whether or not they want to stay or move and move to another school if they do not?
That's a part of the conversation. I don't have the answers to those questions because we have not planned it out. So those details have not been planned out, but those details will be considered. Yes, because you would have to consider that.
Right. And students also? Parents may not want their kids in that, but you may have kids that want to hear who parents say, I want to put...
That's right.
That is a possibility. That's a possibility. And so that, even that also will contribute to whether we go that route. Because if the large number of our parents don't want to do it, then why invest in that? So that's all a part of the planning, and those are some of the things that will rise up from the planning. And we will come back to the board before we even say, this is, this is a viable option for us as a division. We just need to figure those things out.
And I also think that we're going to, in our presentation to parents, we're going to show them the pros and, we're going to show them the benefits of this program so that they have a sense of, how does this impact me? What does it mean for me, and what does it mean for my student? What does it mean for a teacher? So that they get all the facts so that they can make, because most of them are like, no, I don't want to, I don't want my child to go back to school early. But there are some other things that's going to be impactful. And so we want to push parents to think out of the box too so that they to consider something different than what we've done before. So we're hoping that parents will be open-minded about trying something different. And I hear that you all have tried a year-round before. So we have some information and something to start with about perspective.
But see, this is different from year-round. This is adding 20 more days. This is going to cut into that learning loss that we've been having. And see, that's why I like this. You're adding 20 more days of instruction. So the thing is, is that now, if a kid, if a parent pulled a kid out of school, said like you're talking about vacation, that's, that's five days. We still got 15 more days in there with them. But see, that's not the, but, but the point is, is that what you're doing here, you, Petersburg's parents going to surprise you on this one. I guarantee it. Because you're going to have some parents that want their kids in this program, and you might have to end up turning something down. Because, because you, because they know their kid need to be in school. They don't need to be in the street, this stuff like that. So they're going to be, I, I truly believe that so, a lot of the parents in Petersburg are going to surprise you on this one if you make it open to the whole city. So we're going to restructure everything to make sure that the ones that want the opportunity get that opportunity up to their capacity. And, 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 and we compensate people like we said. You'd be surprised the teachers that might participate in it. Because everybody don't take no whole month off. I mean, no whole two months off, two and a half months off, whatever it is. You know, they, because the ones, look how many apply to summer school to teach summer school and don't get it. We got a lot of teachers that apply to teach summer school, but we can't hire all of them for summer school. And they want to work. So I think if you do it right and you get the buy-in, like you said, I, I think Petersburg going to surprise you on this one.
Miss Brown, one thing, one thing we need to be careful about is when we have, we enter other people into our program. We had a bad situation with that at one time. And it was a military situation. And it really cost us a lot. So that's something we have to decide how we move people in and out and who we have moved, who's going to be in these programs. Because this lady gave us, one person gave us a fit. And just something to think about. Another question. Are we, are we locked, are you all locked in for only one school as a pilot?
So we are locked in for this year for planning, for one school.
Planning for one school.
Yes. But we, I can reach out to the state to find out if we want to plan for another.
Because my question is, which, and, and I've shared this many times with Mr. London and Mr. Pierce, would Lakemont being the smallest school, that school should be fully accredited, and I don't understand why it's not. It has the least amount of kids, only about, what, 300 or so? And that, that school has yet to be accredited, and that school should be on the pilot program.
Okay. I would take your recommendation back. We did get input from the principals when we were looking for a pilot, but I would definitely have that conversation.
Exactly. I mean, they have all the going, it's fucking, you don't have to go and get on the bus. You don't have to be, get on the bus.
Okay. I'll take it back.
Everything right there for you. Parents are in place, coming home, people are in place. And it works. It should be working for us. That's, that's...
You got a point, don't you?
I'll, I'll definitely take it back. And if, and there may be a possibility that with that amount of money, we could possibly look at how to explore for both schools within the current amount they gave us. So it could be just an addendum to the grant, but I'll check, I'll find out.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Brown, this is on another subject. 18th or either April, can you bring the board a report on what the Petersburg Virtual Academy is going to look like? We need to talk about that.
Thank you, Bojia. That is a perfect question. Actually, today in the feedback session, we're actually looking to kind of explore a couple of different things with that funding. And so that is, we are not, it's also planning. So it's almost that same thing around getting something in place where we can start to plan. But we also got feedback that we also want to look at, how do we provide fine arts programming for kids? How do we plan for fine arts programming? So how do we plan for the fact that we want orchestra and band at the elementary level so that we can build a pipeline? So we're looking to see how we take that $300,000 and spend the year planning for, planning for, make, creating a plan for the, the Petersburg High School Academy, a virtual academy. But also, how do we begin to bring on offerings for kids, planning for orchestra? We have a wonderful symphony here in Petersburg, and we need to offer our kids in elementary school the opportunity to be exposed to orchestra and band, which will build Vernon Johns, which will build the high school. And so that's a planning year. So what we can probably bring is just kind of the same thing of, what we did here is just a planning year. We needed funds to be able to put some things in place so we could plan and explore, is mostly. So we don't have a full-fledged plan. After the planning year, we'd be able to bring it to you before the next FY '27 and say, hey, here's what we're proposing to roll out for that. So I don't know what that would look like for the next one or April. I guess it would just be, here's what we want to do during our planning year for the Virtual Academy. And we have some alternative education things we want to do in that $300,000. We want to look at Pittman and how we could look at different programming for Pittman within that planning year as well. So, Mr. Brown, we'll work on what we can probably bring for those three different areas. April to say, hey, for a planning year.
Ms. Brown, we can bring, because my team has been working on not only the foreign language piece, but around how do we increase opportunity for our kids to take accelerated classes? And so we have a three-year plan that we would like to bring to the board, will be happy to bring to the board, around how do we, for our kids starting at middle school, how do we offer more honors courses, AP courses at the high school? We have created a plan for a three-year rollout and increasing that for our kids. Because we have to bring it back. Because it was here before, but it went away. And I, I will say, when I had a chance to visit our governor's school...
Athletics?
Yes. I said the things, some of the things I saw, I didn't understand why that was not an opportunity for all of our kids.
Right.
And so, and that, and all of our kids deserve that. And so our, the team has really worked on what can we do within our division? Some of it will be at no cost, some of it will cost some things, and we've kind of plotted out for three years. But that includes the fine arts. It also includes honors and AP courses. We have actually talked to, looking at our current staff, what we can offer. And so we, we can bring that presentation as well. And then the last presentation is we've been looking at, what can we do differently for alternative education as well? And we can bring those two presentations to you.
I'm, I'm so glad to hear you mention about the arts. In, in, in one area, we had a middle school that we should have kept our band director to build that up. That would have been the perfect fix. This weekend, Chrysler Hall, I have a, a relative, Adrian, and Adrian had a Tony Award. Chrysler Hall was packed in Norfolk. You couldn't get in there. She, it, it was really good. I would hope that she could come to Petersburg and do that. I don't know what her next traveling engagement is. But it, it could be, she comes, she could be coming to us for a week. We could be coming to them. Whichever way, it was beautiful. I would try to bring you booklet so you can see it. It was just, it was, I just swear, you couldn't get in Chrysler Hall. No way in Norfolk could you move. Adrian took over that entire city. It was awesome. And I'll share it with you tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you. So again, we're going to try to take that $300,000 and try to do a lot of things with it. So we'll bring that back in for the April board meeting.
And, and, Mr. Chair? Now, I brought this up many times, especially, you know, and then we got a new superintendent talking about the arts. The arts bringing funds themselves. We got away from the plays, the recitals, the different events that we have, the, 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 the singing events that we used to have in Petersburg that we done got away from, that the, that back in the day, they paid $20 to get in. You know? And, and the talent shows and stuff for the kids, when we created platforms for them. One thing that we never really did with our music was, the parents, we don't do recitals anymore. So at the end of the, at the end of the year, if you do a recital, no parents going, no families going to pay to come see their kids in the recital. You could use that money to compensate those areas and different things like that. Same thing with, with the choir, you know? We, we had things like that. Then we always had plays, but we, after those teachers left, Mr. Zeruba and Manny going on there, we don't have any plays no more. And all those plays was, they, they, they did it during the day for the kids, but in, at night, they did it for the community. And they came out like two, three nights in a row and were paid to see these plays that the kids were putting on. And there was, um, 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 funds that went into those programs. But there's a lot of opportunity in the arts. Because if you just, just with the talent shows, you couldn't even get into talent shows when Petersburg had a talent show. Because people were paying trying to come see the kids in the talent show. So we know the opportunity, we know the talent we have here. Just look at the forensic team, that we got these kids always winning or placing in the state in forensics. The talent always been in Petersburg. But I would love to see what you do come to full fruition. Bring it back. We need to bring the arts back.
Yep, that's my question. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Bojia Pritchett and school board members. We're going to move quickly through our final presentation this evening. So we know that there are several slides. So I've already asked Ms. Smith if she could quickly go through the high points of our CTE program. Of course, we have it posted for you to review. But if you could hit those highest points that we want to make sure that we communicate to the board. And if there are questions, of course, we'll be able to get those answered quickly. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board chair Pritchett, vice chair Pierce, school board members, superintendent Brown, colleagues, community partners in person and online. My name is Barbara Smith. I'm the director of workforce readiness. And just wanted to give you the first couple of slides, a quick overview of the CTE department in the next slides. So our mission is, again, making sure that our students, ultimately are college, career, and citizen-ready to be productive citizens with global awareness and a success in their family, relationships, and communities. That is our goal. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. I need my glasses. So the programs that are entailed in CTE department, out of eight program areas outlined through VDOE, we have our business and information technology, family consumer science, career connections, which entails our JVG program, JROTC program, our health and medical science, our marketing, technology and engineering, trade and industrial education. So those are the program areas. And we have our support team, our secretary and our proctor, our testing proctor to make sure that the students are being successful. The only one that we don't have is agriculture, but we do have an agriculture club. And hopefully, at some point, we can make that a program, part of the CT department. Next slide. Our teachers, again, this is a list of our teachers. Our teachers, again, this is a list of our teachers. I mean, you hear more about the teachers. You've heard a lot about the different licensures that they have, so it is very important that our teachers are licensed. I'm not going to read it. The importance and the impact of the teachers being licensed. Obviously, no one wants to be a trained automotive, be trained by an unlicensed automotive instructor. So they have to be trained, one, so that their licensure or certification is valid. Then they can use those credentials for graduation requirement and also use it as a substitute. If they're not passing their social studies and science SOLs, they can actually use the extra credentials in CTE to meet their graduation requirements. So it's very important that our teachers are licensed and they have the certifications that they need. The next couple of slides are just the names of the teachers, and so I don't have to go through that. So you can go over the high school and Vernon Johns and Blandford teachers. Again, oh, next. Brightpoint Community College, these are the classes that we're offering. We're partnering with Brightpoint to make sure our students are now, we're just now getting interest. We're getting enrollment. I've even talked to Ms. Davis at Pittman Academy. We're looking at our 2.0s to see if that's an option for them to either come to our CTE programs at the high school or actually go to Brightpoint. So that's, we're meeting about that. And then also, they receive tutoring, they assistance here at Petersburg High School and at Brightpoint. So we are supporting our students who are going to Brightpoint. Next. Student organizations, again, just a great curricular, co-curricular part of CTE for students to promote, so we can promote leadership, competition, community, and school activities for our students. Next. Again, teacher credentials and professional developments. We are required by our Perkins Grants, which we will hear more about when we present the Perkins Grant. We are required to make sure our teachers receive professional development, whether it's in the school district, throughout the state, nationally, or locally. So that is a requirement that we participate and make sure our teachers are highly qualified in their fields. As you can see also, we're looking at dual enrollment, so that may be a possibility to assist the enrollment for dual enrollment. Next. Some of our program accountability measures, again, VDOE implement these measures to make sure that we are being successful. Our achievement rates are up, surveying students, looking at our annual report, when the students graduate, how well have they done? That is a requirement under the Perkins Grant. We have to have quarterly meetings. Mr. Lundey is on our CTE Advisory Council Board, where we speak with all business industries, partners, parents, students, participate in making sure the Perkins Grant is meeting all these measures provided by VDOE.
At the end, you can, can you do your question at the end? She's trying to get through it.
Next. Work-based learning opportunities, extracurricular opportunities are a part of the CTE programs. Again, Perkins Grant do offer assistance in making sure these students receive the work-based learning experience that is a part of their graduation requirement and obviously are three E's of making sure our students are being exposed in order to be enrolled, enlisted, employed, and have some entrepreneurship. So in our next slide, it shows all the great partners that we partner up with to make sure that we're meeting all these goals in so many different facets, during the summertime, during the daytime, after school. At any given time, we can call on some partners for various opportunities and exposure for our students. Next slide. You can go to the next slide. Again, this is our, this is our end goal. This is our transition plan for our students to make sure that this is the goal once they graduate. The next slide shows the actual income flow, where we're getting the funds from, and then where we're spending the funds for our programs. The next slide shows, and this will be several slides, showing each program, each course, each exam associated with it. This is for the past three years, how many students are enrolling those programs each year, and how many are actually passing, the pass rate for each one of those courses for the past three years. So again, will allow us to see the growth and where we need to work on, whether it's student information that we have to provide, teacher professional development, what is it that we need to make sure that the students are passing their courses? And the pass rate is just, again, an accountability that we are passing 80% of our students or more in our program. So obviously, the pass rate will be a telltale for how they will do on their industry credential. Obviously, if they're failing, they may not do so well on that industry credential. So this is just for each program, and then you notice the cost, this is what is costing us for each program area. So I've highlighted it, you can look through each program. So we're going to go through slide number 24. So each program is highlighted. Keep on going. Keep on going. We're going to go to slide 24. Keep on going. There you go. This one slide, and you'll see three other slides for the past three years. For each course, there is an examination for the students. So this highlights, we've only given five exams in 2021, 22, but each year it has increased from five to eight to 11 different exams. But I've highlighted, what is the enrollment in those classes? How many students attempted to take the exam? How many passed? How many did not pass? And the actual percentage passing rate. So again, if our goal is to make sure our students are college career ready and ready to go right into the workforce, or again, those four E's, we need to make sure we're providing that opportunity that they have available to them. One, indefinitely participating in taking those industry credentials and then looking to make sure that they are passing it, so they would, right out the door, be ready to be employed. Okay, and the next, yes? Yes, we are. Go, so the next one is the next couple of years, so you can go two more, couple more slides until you get to the benefits. And obviously, the benefits of our program. I mean, off the top of your head, you know, the work-based learning experience, they earn industry exams, professional license. They are high school completers of our programs and obviously take advantage of the dual enrollment. And then this is our last two slides, that shows our SMART goal, again, reiterating the pass rate of the class, participation in taking those exams, and the pass rate of the exams. So that is our SMART goal. Yes, we set them in December, and this is the overall for all CTE. So again, the assistant principal and I, working with the principals, we're working together to make sure all the teachers have their own SMART goal, so we can reach that overall SMART goal. And then lastly, the school district support that we're getting and we're working on is making sure that we're creating those students who are ready to take those exams. We're looking at our master's schedules to make sure that they're taking the right classes in the right sequence. They're following their academic career plan, our partners and our partnership agreements, that they're assisting us, making sure the teachers have their specific teacher professional developments needed to make sure that they're equipped to then teach our students. And some other things that obviously can encourage our teachers are stipends when they do participate in student organizations, collaboration with our college projects, our counselors, our great partnership, and making sure that we're on track with the students. And lastly, of course, recognizing our completers, our students who have completed career pathways, again, to encourage them into the next step after graduation. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have an industrial arts teacher?
So they have transitioned that terminology to technology and engineering, education, or trade and industrial education. So they've kind of separated some of those programs.
That's not in our south wing there. We don't have any industrial.
Yeah, so most of our CTE students are housed in the south wing.
Now, I said, do we have a teacher in that building?
So the trade and industrial teachers are our cosmetology teachers, automotive teachers?
The industrial arts teacher.
So no, there's not a course under industrial art. They've revamped a lot of our courses with different titles.
But we had an individual in there, Mr. Brown.
Okay, so that's for the carpentry, so?
Well, it's the same, that's industrial.
So, yeah, the name has changed over the years. They've separated him. So carpentry?
Do we have a body in that?
No, but we have the posting out, and we are going to be interviewing.
Yeah, that means a person that's interested in doing that, but not have anybody there to instruct him or her. And so that's a very, that's a need.
Right.
The next thing that I'd like to mention, as we keep talking about going to Brightpoint and any other place, have we spoken to counselors that are aware of our kids, maybe their mathematics, their reading, their preparation? I don't want to send these kids out here and not be prepared. So those things need to be looked at very clearly, so that our kids will be very prepared to go into those places and not look bad. And I've said that, I've reiterated that several times, that an industrial arts person should be in those classes. Petersburg High School always had that, and it was always a good program, a lot of strong leaders. But we need to, we need to look at that. You can't just leave, leave it out, because somebody is interested in it. Thank you.
So you are correct, Board Member Lundey. One of the things, if you go back and look at these supports, these are things that we're trying to move forward in the future. One of those things is we need to recruit teachers with CTE. We need to recruit teachers who are certified, because if our kids go through a program and that teacher is not certified, then those certificates or classifications will not, it's just exposure. So we do have to do a better job of recruiting more for CTE. If you look, you talked about the counselor's role. Part of the counselor's role is looking at that master's schedule and making sure that students are scheduled correctly, having conversations with kids, outlining what it takes for them to be successful in those programs. And so we're actually looking at the role of the counselor in this. If you go back one other slide, we kind of, we met with teachers early November, October, and we talked about improving our participation rate and getting more kids in, and that's where the CTA teachers start setting some goals around. Because if we're spending a lot, all this money to provide CTE programming, then we need to have kids participate in them.
But we don't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We want our kids to be happy in those choices that they make up, that we have up here.
Yes.
And most of the time, most of our movement in our building is because they are not interested in those areas. You're sometimes pushed in those areas with those counselors.
And that's a part of the conversation. That's why we're saying we're going back, having a conversation around master's schedule. And you're correct. Sometime kids, and what we learned, I met with all the CTA teachers. What they shared with me was, some of our kids, if they take part one of some pathway, they don't, they don't get a chance to take the part two until like later, and they've lost interest. Or they are, part one and part two is offered at the same time. That's a master scheduling issue. There's also a interest level, interest, and I know that there are surveys that have been given to our kids. And to be honest, there is an opportunity for us to look at our programs and see those programs that are not, that our kids don't have our interest in. We may need to look at, do those programs need to go away and replace with something where they are interested in?
And layups for not least, I'm really trying to say that I don't want students to go to another facility and be embarrassed. I don't want them to not know how to read a ruler. I don't want them to not know how to do the things that they want to do to be successful. We are not focused on that. We are at a very low level on that. Because nowhere in the world you wouldn't have an industrial arts teacher in the building. Many kids want to build. Many kids want to do. If you go around in this city of Petersburg right now, young folks building houses all over everywhere in Petersburg right now. And that's not just elaborating, that's real. They're actually working. But I'm just, I just don't see where we've been. I don't see where we've been a success story in that area.
I would agree with you.
Has not been in this building. That doesn't make it mysterious.
Okay, I agree with you, and that's an area that we're going to work on.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes. Is it my turn? It might be Ms. Tucker's turn. You started on that side. Go ahead, Ms. Tucker. You don't have none?
I do. I have a question. As far as when the students do express interest, what grade level do they start to explore the different career and technical education?
So they have to start in sixth grade. It is a required course in middle school, career investigation. So all the sixth graders actually go through that course. And we have several partners and curriculums and different ways that they can explore different careers.
Take it away, Ms. Brown. But your child is in sixth grade, right?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have nine.
Okay, because when my daughter was in sixth at Vernon Johns', they actually called her parents, and I actually sat down and met with the counselor and decided which class she was going to take. They actually called me in, and I was not on the school board.
Now, the course is career investigation in sixth grade, but the required academic and career plan starts in seventh grade. So the career investigation is to help them try to understand that. They do the survey. And actually, all the sixth graders did the survey, interest survey. And then in seventh grade, they'll use that information to complete their academic and career plan. So it's kind of like when you go to college and they tell you, this is what you need to take and do for four years. That's the same plan that every seventh grader should receive also. So we're working on making sure that happens.
Yes. When I first got on the board, we met, and we talked about Newport New Shipyard. I'm very interested in career placement. A lot of things you don't have to train kids on, but you got to have connections with different entities for them to be trained. For example, EMS. Okay, we don't have to train them in EMS, but if we have a placement thing to put them with Southside, Merseyside Crew or somewhere else if they interested, so they can train there, and they are paid for. The state, the locale will pay for it. Same thing with kids that reach the age of 18. They can take the training for free for a fireman with the fire department to get certified. If we had a plate, if we did placement, now, we got people that want summer jobs that need summer employees that would take them at 15, 16 years old. Do we do placement with that? If it's no more than cutting grass in a cemetery or cutting grass for Fort Lee with one of the companies that got a contract, or working with Public Works in the city, we're not doing the placement like we used to do. Some of my first jobs were through Petersburg High, because they got me placed with Fort Lee to go down there when the troops come in during the summer, the reserves, they put me in a mess hall. Well, you know, I didn't, I didn't like it, but the thing is that I had opportunity to work for a month and got experience doing that, and then I decided, maybe it's something else I might like to do. But the placement came through the school. So they say, hey, I got opportunity here. Do you want to take this job, make some money? And when then they tried it out, next thing you know, I was somewhere else, because I didn't care for that. But the thing is that placement, employee placement, won't cost you, won't cost us a dime for training. But at the same time, like when we got on the phone and talked to Newport New Shipyard, they had 4,000, they need 4,000 employees. Somebody graduated from Petersburg High, they would relocate them and pay for the relocation and pay them starting out, they can, you know, and teach them the job skills, because they still need people. There's a whole lot of industry that's right here in Petersburg, that if we start looking at placement, they would take us, they would take someone at an early age or at the age, upon graduation and train them themselves. So the thing is that I don't see placement taking place in our school system anymore. And so the thing is that we can do that. We got entities in the city that need people, and it might need them for temporary, and you know, they'll train them, you know, especially Public Works. So I know we need to do that, fire these type of trainers. You don't have to do it yourself, they'll do it. But the thing is that, but we work out these relationships with the industry, the local industry, the local government, that placement is very, very, very important. So, but you got to establish those relationships. Now, with the things that I work with, the organizations that I work with, and foundations that I work with, I'm the out- I'm the outreach person. So I know for a fact, there's a lot of opportunity out there. How do we want to go about creating opportunity for our kids? And see, the thing is, is that we cannot just keep doing the same thing and things are going to change. We got some kids that, we got, in every school system, you got kids not going to college. They might want to do the military. But then again, how do you introduce them to that if they don't want, don't want to do ROTC? Because they'll get to their senior year and say, hey, I don't want to go to college. And so, the thing is, is that, but there's a lot of opportunity out there. Can we place them in a job? How many have we placed in a job upon graduation since you've been in that situation? How many job placements have we done? And that's what CTE should be about. That's what it should be about. Making sure that when these kids walk out here, that they got a job, and we create an entity to where that we can help them get placed in a job. And so, because everybody is not going to, going to continue their education in college. So placement, I think we should, I need to start looking at some placement opportunities to reach out to the every, the whole community, industry, and government to make sure we, everybody's on board. Because we have, the greater asset we have are these kids in this city, and these young people coming out of school. And we want them to walk out there, if they're not going to school, not going to train, they need to go, they need to work.
Thank you, Ms. Mounds. Board Member, it is now after nine o'clock. We really do not like going past nine o'clock. This is too long to have a board meeting. I mean, because we've been here since 4:30, and nine o'clock is long. So we need to move on. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Move on. Dr. Brown, Ms. Brown, Dr. Brown, move on to the next item.
All right, thank you. Understood. Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett. Really quickly, we're going to do our policy updates really quickly. So if you look at the screen, we have quickly, we have several policies that have been reviewed. So really quickly, Policy BCG, School Attorney, VSBA Policy BCG. We policy was reviewed based upon the last review on 1/15/20. And it was reviewed by VSBA on 2/25, and there were no revisions recommended. Really quickly, PCS, PCPS Policy BDD. Quorum is the title, and it's VSBA Policy BDD. This policy was reviewed based upon last review on 1/15/2020, reviewed by the VSBA on 2/25, and no revisions are recommended. Our Policy BFE, also CHD, that is entitled Administration and Policy Absence, that is aligned to our VSBA BFE, also CHD. And this policy language has been updated for clarity, and no substantive revisions have been made. Our next one is our CHD, also BFE, Administration and Policy Absence as well, CHD, also BFE. This policy language has been updated for clarity, and no substantive revisions have been made. Really quickly, the next PCPS Policy DI. The title of this policy is Financial Accounting and Reporting. This is VSBA Policy DI, and this policy language remains unchanged, and there are cross-references with update, updated language. Our next policy, Policy DN, it is PCPS Policy Title, Disposal of Surplus Items. This is our VSBA Policy Alignment DN, and this policy language has been updated for clarity, but there is no substantive revisions have been made as well. Then we have our policy for PCPS Policy EF, and that is called Food Service Management, that aligns with our VSBA Policy EF. And this policy language has been updated and cross-references updated for VSBA 2/25. Is that the end? Okay. Food Sanitation Program, this is Policy EFD. That policy is Food Sanitation Program is aligned to VSBA EFD. This policy language has been updated, and there are legal references have been updated by VSBA around 2/25. Our next policy, Policy FB. This policy is entitled Facilities Planning. This is Policy FB. And the policy language in this policy has been updated for clarity, and there are legal references and cross-references updated in alignment with VSBA 2/25. And then lastly, we have our Policy IKG. This policy title is Remediation Recovery Program. It is in alignment with VSBA IKG, and this policy recommended, has been recommended for deletion. The policy requirements are encompassed in Other Policies, AG Literacy Plan, IGBD Programs for Students with Reading Deficiencies, and IGBE Remedial and Summer Instruction Program that has been deleted by VSBA 2/25.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next, we move to off the comment period. No one signed up, but. Okay, we'll move to our action item 6A, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board Members. Our first action item, it is the super, it is our federal programs investment request. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve purchase requests of federal programs, federal programs investments to include Axiom for the purchase of math and ELA tutors for PCPS Elementary and Middle Schools during the 24-25 school year, Chromebook and Chromebooks for Title I approval for the purchase of 3,000 Chromebooks for students in grades K through 8, and the purchase of university tutors to provide intervention and acceleration support for Petersburg City Public Schools for in-person tutoring instruction as provided. Our next action item is Action Item 6B, Addendum to Contract Number 25-001 between I and M Shuttle Transport and the PCPS School Board. I'm sorry. I what?
6A, you've heard the recommendation on the federal investments that Ms. April went over. Is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Move by Mr. Mounds. Is there a second, Mr. Pierce? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. 6B.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve an addendum to Contract Number 25-001 between I and M Shuttle and Transport and the School Board of the City of Petersburg as provided.
Heard the recommendations, is there a motion to accept? Move by Mr. Pierce, is there a second? Ms. Tucker? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. 6C.
Thank you, School Board, School Board Chair. And this is for Appomattox Governor Schools enrollment slots for the 25-26 school year. And so, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve a Petersburg City Public Schools student slot commitment of 67, which reflects an increase of five student slots at Appomattox Regional Governor Schools for school for the 25-26 school term.
So move.
Move by Mr. Mounds, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Daniels, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
60. Okay. The next one, 60. We are going to Code RVA Regional High School Slots. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve a Petersburg City Public Schools student slot commitment of 10, which reflects an increase of two student slots at Code RVA Regional High School for the 25-26 school term.
So move.
Move by Mr. Mounds. Ms. Proctor, you want a second?
Sure.
Second by Ms. Proctor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The information item, 7A, Board Members, the information item is in there? The ones that were submitted? Any new business from Board Members? No new business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Daniels, second by Mr. Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. That was long.
Mr. Chair, we get overtime.
I ain't gonna pay him overtime, but me and you don't, we don't get overtime for those students here. They ain't getting overtime.
Yeah.
You know, we know we gonna get him done. If we don't, if anybody deserves it, student here deserves it, don't.
My law. Because I'm gonna see if she, I've already asked her to give us an update on how many we did last.
You're right. Not 20 days.